Good evening, everybody. City Clerk, could you take the role, please?
Alderman Fleming.
Here.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wen. Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Ruth Simmons. Alderman Sufferton. Alderman Ravel.
Here.
Alderman Rainey. We have a call.
All right, thank you, City Clerk. And Alderman Braithwaite is here. Just wasn't at his seat, so he should be recorded as here. And Alderman Ruth Simmons is on her way. So welcome, everybody, to the Monday, June 18th, 2018 Evanston City Council meeting. We have two big issues on the agenda today. One is the Harley Clark, which I see a lot of blue out there for Harley Clark. And the second item is our budget. And we've just started a priority-based budgeting exercise, which the city manager and the city staff are going to take us through. In terms of our agenda today, we're going to do the budget is first on our agenda, and then Harley Clark. So that's, let's go ahead and begin. City Manager, do you have any public announcements?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Just as a reminder for the folks that are here, if you are in this room, you need a seat. And so if you do not have a seat, if you could go out into the ante room. In addition, we have overflow seating in the meeting rooms around the corner. So if you are in the ante room and would like to have a regular seat, you're welcome to do that. We also ask that people keep the center aisle here clear through into the hallway. So the fire marshal is here and will be asking folks to help us comply. Also, we're expecting a pretty nasty storm here over the next couple of hours. So if there's anything that people left outside, put up outside, we would certainly appreciate it if you could make sure that that's secured before we get started. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. City Clerk?
Just a few brief announcements. I just want to speak briefly about the success of the event that the Clerk's office held with Recorder Yarborough last week, the property after-death event. It was a really powerful and informative event. We plan to hold that event again with the county Recorder's office. A lot of folks in the community have expressed interest in it, and it was just such a wonderfully informative event. And then lastly, I just want to quickly announce that we have these forms that are posted around the council chambers. You can use your smartphone and hold it up to the image, and you'll be able to get the council agenda and minutes through this. One of our brilliant interns came up with that idea. And we'll also be doing that for public comment signing as well. So you can just take out your smartphone, phone, open up the camera, hold it in front of the image, and you'll get the agenda and minutes. Very, lastly, is we have a few events coming up. Next week, we have a how-to adjourn before midnight event with Parliamentarian Joan Bundy, Bundley, and myself. We'll discuss the council rules and Roberts' Rules of Order. And so we invite all members of the public. We hope that you'll RSVP with the Clerk's office. You can also, it's really great, we'd love if a few council members were able to attend, as well as folks who are on boards, committees, and commissions. And then to close out, we have an affordable housing event coming up in July. We have an event on boards, committees, and commissions with a number of board members and staff liaisons joining that, as well as a participatory budgeting event coming up in July. So we'll post more information about those events as they come closer. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Clerk Reed. And one way to adjourn before midnight is to start the meeting at 6 o'clock. So thank you, everybody up here for starting at 6:00, and everybody for arriving an hour earlier than we normally do. We're going to go ahead now and move into public comment. Public comment, for those of you that are new to the proceedings, the city council rules are we set aside 45 minutes for public comment. We take the total number of people that have signed up for public comment, and we divide it by 45, and that's what we get. We have 41 people that have signed up for public comment, so that means each person will be allotted one minute for public comment. We have done this before. We've actually done this with less than a minute, so I'm actually pleased with all the folks that we have here and the folks that are watching at home that were able to allot a minute per person. So focus on your succinct message that you want to leave the council. And again, just recognize lots of these issues, whether they're dealing with our budget or whether they're dealing with the mansion on the lake that we've been talking about for over five years now, are difficult issues. And there are people on both sides of those issues, so I respect everyone being civil and respectful in their communication to those here in the audience and to those up here at the dais. So with that, we'll go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt. The police chief has asked me to just once again remind people about the seating. We're still not completely clearing the aisles. We need to have a clear path through there. Also, we have overflow seating with television access right around the corner. So if you would not prefer to stand, you can watch it on television just around the corner in our second-floor meeting room. So again, if you're in this room, you need to have a chair. You cannot be sitting on the floor. You cannot be standing. And we need to keep that center aisle clear for safety reasons. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and start to call folks up here. I'll read them off three at a time, so you know who you're coming after. And again, I ask that you stick to the one minute. I'll give you a little nod when you're at that or close to that minute, and I expect that you'll be able to wrap it up in about 10 seconds if you get the nod. So here we go. Susan Aaron is the first, and then we've got Julia Bachrock. And I should apologize to anyone whose name I mangle, which is very possible. I always do every meeting. So I apologize. So when you get up, if you don't mind giving your name and what ward you're from, would be wonderful. And then the third one will be Lisa DeChera.
Susan Aaron, 7th Ward. I am reading a portion of a letter from Jan Schakowsky that followed a conversation we had with her today. Dear Mayor Hagerty and City Council Members, I write regarding Harley Clark. I believe that more time should be given towards trying to reach a resolution to preserve this historic building and make it open and accessible to the entire community. Both the National Trust for Historic Preservation and Landmarks Illinois have urged Harley Clark not be demolished. Lighthouse Landing Park is one of Evanston's most diverse environments, both in terms of the natural environment and the built environment. However, it has not always represented the diversity of the Evanston community. With adaptive reuse of Harley Clark, Lighthouse Landing could be one of the most diverse places in our city, drawing people of all races, ages, and abilities. I am aware that the adaptive reuse plan proposed by the local nonprofit seeks to create an environmental education center to promote STEM learning and create studio spaces and event spaces. I have heard from Landmarks Illinois that these plans are viable based on other successful precedents. These types of interdisciplinary programs at the intersection of art and science and thoughtful reuse are consistent with the Lakefront Master Plan and would represent exciting new opportunities. I understand that the Evanston Lake House and Gardens have offered to pay for a year to maintain the building to allow them more time to demonstrate that funding support is indeed available. This seems like a sensible solution to step back and take a time out from advancing the irreversible decision to demolish the building. The city of Evanston would be no worse off if they were to allow more time for the funds of the building's restoration to be raised. So with that, I offer up.
Thank you, Susan. All right. Next up, we've got Julia. Julia Bachrock. She's not here? Okay. All right. So then we've got Lisa DeChera. And then after Lisa, we've got Rodney Green and Carla Sutton.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa DeChera, and I'm Director of Advocacy for Landmarks Illinois. I'm here to speak to two things on your agenda this evening, both the Harley Clark Mansion as well as the priority-based budget survey, which included Historic Preservation Review as one of the city services being considered for elimination. Regarding both of these items, we are seeing unprecedented actions undermining historic preservation, unfortunately, here in the city. The city's willingness to end its good-faith negotiations with the Evanston Lake House and Gardens on a lease agreement for the Harley Clark Mansion is an action that has left this historic property vulnerable again and set up for demolition. This action was surprising since it followed the Harley Clark Planning Committee's recommendations to proceed with the lease agreement and the city council's initial vote to support it. It is in direct conflict with previous public surveys that showed citizens preferred to see a reuse for the landmarked Harley Clark, a city-owned asset that is supposed to be protected and a building that would never be built again today. This is not a good public process. And while priority-based budget survey is a good process, Historic Preservation Review being considered something to be eliminate is really, is not understandable when there are so many protected historic districts and landmarks in the city. And I really urge you to reconsider Historic Preservation Review being consideration, under consideration for elimination. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Rodney. Next up, we've got Rodney Green, then Carla Sutton, then Rudy Mayo.
My name is Rodney Green, and say good evening to the mayor, clerk, council members, and the city manager. I'm here to speak against the demolition of the Harley Clark. It doesn't make sense for looking at to negotiate with another group when the Lighthouse Gardens group had already said that they would find the money to support this. They have raised that money. I think they should be able to go ahead and use that money to do the restoration that they said they wanted to do. I don't think the other organization put a RFP. I don't think they put in a proposal, so I don't think that should be considered as one of the objects of considering who would take this. Second, I want to talk about the budget, and I think that also with the budget talk, you should not touch the police, fire, Kevin Brown's youth program for the summer, nor should you touch the senior citizens taxi and their forms as well. I think you ought to reconsider some of these things, and before you make that decision, I think you should listen to the community in a whole. And the last thing, okay, I want to say is that unless you've made changes in Rules Committee about not giving your time up to other people speaking, if it didn't go through Rules Committee and that comes to the committee, you can't do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Rodney. Okay, next up, Carla Sutton, Rudy Mayo, then Nevis Maine. Can I apologize if I'm mispronouncing people's names?
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, City Manager, members of the council. My name is Carlos B. Sutton, 1821 Darrow Avenue, a proud citizen of Ward 5. I'm appealing for you this evening to oppose Resolution 43R16. We've had a presentation by the Landmarks Committee to give you a more open and transparent way of dealing with disposing of city property. I'm soliciting your support for five votes, so we, as members of the Lake House Gardens, can proceed to keep this open and accessible to all Evanston citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Rudy? All right, we've got Rudy Mayo, then again, Nevis Maine, and then Mike Ellis. And again, if I'm mispronouncing any of your names, give all your names. All right.
Name is Rudy Mayo. Live in the 5th Ward here in Evanston. Director of Hoop Avenue's Youth Basketball Organization in Evanston. Also Director of Evanston Theater Youth Basketball Organization in Evanston. And then I'm also a coach at Evanston High School. Just here to talk about the youth budget cuts that's going on in the community. I ask that you reconsider that. I work a lot with a lot of the youth kids that come from single household, parent households. So three things that they, that they'll miss out on if you guys are able to cut that is their ability to learn a new skill, them being able to gain experience, and then also them being able to build a network. That's very important for our youth and them able to succeed after that. So I ask that you reconsider that.
Sure. Thank you, and thank you for all you guys are doing.
Hello. I'm Nevis Maine, and I'm also one of the basketball coaches at the high school. And along with that, I work in the safety department. And as well, I would like you guys to reconsider those cuts for the youth program because we see the benefits on a daily basis, you know, because we work with the kids. But I'm not just talking about our student athletes. I'm also talking about regular kids that are going through the building on a daily basis. You know, they form a lot of relationships with, you know, people from the outreach program, the green team that, I don't know, I think they hired over 600 jobs, you know? So that's 600 kids that are just off the streets during the summer, you know? And they're with positive role models and people that can relate to them and talk to them about navigating these waters on a daily basis in Evanston. You know, we talk about all the issues that we have already. If we were to cut some of these programs, you know, there was a number I heard that maybe 200, 300 positions would get cut. You know, that's another 200, 300 possibly kids just running around with no guidance. So, you know, that's just my piece.
Thank you, Nevis.
Good evening. My name is Mike Ellis, and I'm from the 5th Ward, and I'm here to talk about the budget considerations tonight, specifically the youth and the young adult programs. And just to echo what's already been said, as a teacher at the high school, and you see the job fair where the students participate and the programs that are available for those students to be a part of, you can just tell the difference in the engagement of those students in the high school when they're a part of something like that. They're really involved in the high school, and like Nevis said, beyond the sports, we're talking about the academics. We're talking about having a mentor that they can go home and bounce ideas off of and get direction and guidance. I think the last thing all of us would want to do is pull that platform out from those kids where there is support and direction and guidance. They are the future of our town and our community, and as someone that was, had moved into Evanston, I would say that was the single most wonderful element of this town was all of the support and the programs that our youth receive. And I think that that's, that's the star on the tree. So I appreciate everyone considering that, and thank you.
Thank you, Coach. Next up, we've got Yifif Thurman, Manitris Pierre, and Joe Matthews. And again, if you guys wouldn't mind pronouncing your name, in case I mangled it.
Demolished my name, but that's okay. My name is Yifa Thurman, and I'm from the 9th Ward. And I'm here to talk about the youth and young adult division and the budget cuts that are related to that. Most of the people that have talked so far are working with the youth, and I am a parent of a youth who's participated in this program. And I moved to Evanston six years ago, and I work here as well. I'm involved in the community as a worker and just being a part of the community. And what I noticed right away is all of these amazing things that are available to adults and to seniors and to children in the community. And it was just until last year that I was able to actually be involved because my son was having a lot of difficulty. And for that program to be removed would be a travesty. There are so many children that are taking advantage of that, single parents and also double-income parents. And I just hope that you guys can really pay attention to the fact that the children really need that. Thank you.
Thank you, Yifa.
Good evening, Renitris Pierre, 8th Ward. I'm up here again because this is still an issue. We need the program for the youth and young adults. As I stated before, my son is not a problematic child, but he did have a need that I was not able to fulfill. I looked up this organization, and the same day, the same day within hours, someone reached out to me and was able to meet with my son and myself and get him on a corrective path so he didn't act out because the reality is, I'm divorced. My son's father lives states away in the South and has no engagement with him. So this is his chance to engage, to talk to someone about the issues that I cannot relate to him with as a woman, as an adult, period. Please reconsider eliminating the program. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got Joe Matthews, then Robert Darl, Robert I always been setting up, Dahl Rempel, and then Gary Cull.
Hi, thank you, Joe Matthews, 7th Ward. I've spoken before. I live directly across the street from the Harley Clark. I think that gives me a right to state an opinion because I'll be most, or arguably most affected by whatever happens there. I'm worried that the only sustainable uses for the building require privatization, commercialization, things like that, commercial kitchens, catering, big events, weddings. I was initially a supporter of the Lighthouse, Lake House Garden group, but when they failed to reach funding goals, it just felt like we were headed for another quagmire. What we have now is unsustainable. We have a building sitting there, falling apart, no plan. Even five years to get something happening there feels like too long. We turned it into an amazing park, and we free up the resources the city might otherwise have to invest in restoring that or bailing out that project to all the things that the speakers ahead of me were talking about, all the programs that are on the chopping block here in Evanston. We've got finite resources. We can't afford it all. Let's just take the opportunity to deliver park to the community that we can all enjoy. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Robert, then Gary Cull, and then Deborah Hirschfield.
Mayor Hagerty, members of the city council, my name is Robert Dahl Rempel, and I reside at Ward 7. I support the Lighthouse Dunes proposal that brings more habitat and green space to Evanston. For the record, I'm a member of this group, and to be further transparent, the view from my front door is the Lighthouse Landing parking lot, something that's not going to change regardless which plan is accepted. Beyond the obvious environmental advantages, the proposal highlights the Gross Point Lighthouse, providing dramatic views of the city's most iconic symbol that are presently obscured. Our group is also suggesting an extension of the parking capacity by 20% to alleviate some of the constant circling and vain of beachgoers trying to find a space. Even with this addition, the project will have less blacktop on the property at the end than there is there now. Our proposal also offers a risk-free and cost-free end to many years of debate about what to do with this property. At the time you have, at this time, you have plenty of other things to spend money on and your time on. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Gary Cull, Deborah Hirschfield, then maybe Gina Rosenblatt?
Yeah, I'm Gary Cull. I live in the 7th Ward, a 40-year resident of Evanston. And although I don't advertise this on a daily basis, I'm a circuit court judge elected out of this area. But importantly, it's relevant because I sit in a criminal courtroom in the 4th Municipal District where each day, it's a felony criminal courtroom, where each day I see young men and women who could have benefited from the intervention that you've just heard about at least on three or four occasions, and that's only the first group. Mentorship is not something that happens every third Wednesday. Mentorship happens when people are involved in your life and they understand your life. And the young men and women that are involved in Kevin's program here are ideal for this situation. They are guides for these young men to make better choices, and they can show you that better choices now make better results later on. So I just urge you to maintain funding. If we can save a building, you can certainly save your children, don't you think?
Thank you, Judge. We've got Deborah, then Gina Rosenblatt, then Tom Hodgman.
Deborah Hirschfield, 7th Ward. I just want to share that Harley Clark, taking a class there almost 40 years ago, is what started me on my entire art trajectory. I've had a long career in fiber arts. I have nothing but great memories of that place, and I wish somebody had the letter to date that the granddaughter wrote about her memories. I wish I had brought it, about Harley Clark and being there with her grandparents. It's, it's a, it has good vibes. That's all I have to say. When you walk in there, it feels good. It feels right. I've taken quite a few courses there since then. Actually, because of Harley Clark, I went to Mexico. I taught. I taught at Evanston Township. I taught at other recreational departments. I became an art educator. I mean, I just really would like to see that building stay in Evanston. And I don't think that people have more authority to speak about it because they live next door or across the street. And I think the building can serve more of Evanston. We need more services for everyone. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Deborah. All right. Gina, again, I may be mispronouncing Rosenblatt, looks like the last name is. And then we've got Tom Hodgman, then Candace Dahl Rempel. All right. Tom, why don't you come up? And if Gina shows up, we'll deal with that.
Good evening, mayor, clerk, city manager, members of city council. Tom Hodgman on the board of Evanston Lake House and Gardens. I live in the 7th Ward. In the past two weeks, when we heard that you all would be considering the possibility of advancing discussions of demolition, we started a petition, and over 2,100 people have signed the petition from all over the city of Evanston as of this afternoon and still counting. So there's broad public support for saving Harley Clark. Many institutions, like the Preservation League of Evanston, Design Evanston, Landmarks Illinois, the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and Open Lands, a conservation group, all support adaptive reuse. There's also a process in place around demolition and the city ordinances that must be followed, and it's very uncertain if demolition would be approved by the Preservation Commission. We believe with time, as the full cost of demolition and restoration of the site become known, that it will be clear that saving the only public lakefront building for use by everyone is a far superior option to demolition. We appreciate that with time comes cost to the city, and therefore, we have made an offer to pay the city $15,000, which is equal to the city's estimate of annual cost to maintain Harley Clark, and in exchange, we would have a one-year option to raise $1 million to demonstrate the viability of saving the house. We agree the dunes in the Jensen Gardens should be restored. However, you do not need to demolish our only public lakefront building to restore the dunes, as they exist in physically separate places. And it would be wonderful if the proponents of restoration of the dunes and demolition would contribute their funds towards that restoration even if the house is saved.
I need you, I need you to wrap up soon, Tom.
Yep. Thank you, guys, very much.
Oh, thank, thank you, Tom. All right. Candace. And then after Candace, we're going to have Charles Smith, then Sarah Shawstock.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty and members of the council. I'm Candace Dahl Rempel, and I live in Ward 7. I support renaturalizing the Harley Clark site. I do understand that deconstructing the mansion would be a loss. I do understand. The building's absence, however, would open exciting possibilities that are more affordable, less risky for the city, and more inclusive for all residents, since no fees would be required to use the space. Under the city's leadership and with broad citizen participation, a more detailed vision can be developed, but at minimum, renaturalized solution would retain the key features of the Jensen Gardens, expand green space and natural habitats, and provide more access to all Evanstonians. Evanston has great expertise in its many garden, green space, and conservation organizations. Their representatives could provide insight on how to design an exceptional plan that will build our community and generate enthusiasm throughout the city. Thank you for allowing me to comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Candace. All right, we've got Charles, Charles Smith.
Could Rosenblatt have been me, Rosedale?
Let's see. Yes, it could have been. Let's do Charles, and then we'll slide, and then we'll slide you in. All right, welcome.
Sorry.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. This is a very important topic. The Lighthouse Landing Park is one of our most diverse environments in Evanston's lakefront, both in terms of natural environment and built environment. We have the lake, beach, dunes, woods, Jensen's landscape, Noah's Playground, and acres of grass. We also have the lighthouse, Harley Clark, the fire ring, the picnic shelter, fog houses. However, it has not always been the most diverse place in terms of people. If we demolish Harley Clark, we put another quarter acre of grass on our lakefront. We will perpetuate the status quo. With adaptive reuse of Harley Clark, we could make Lighthouse Landing truly one of our most diverse places in our city. Natural diversity, built environment diversity, and human diversity. It is something that Evanston should aspire to. I want to address one other issue, and that is, like, who benefits? Who would use the Harley Clark? I think that it's an opportunity for every citizen, no matter income or race, to enjoy the lakefront in a way that is not available now. And if we destroy this building, we forever, it forever means that low-income, medium-income family would not be able to enjoy the lake in comfort and in a way that a lot of people do. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Charles. All right. We've got Sarah Shawstock, then, excuse me. We have, yes.
Thank you. Anna Roosevelt, Ward 3. Good evening. Thank you for your attention. Harley Clark is a solid and engaging structure built for receptions, meetings, events, and all kinds of laboratories. Therefore, ideal for a community education and recreation center, unique in its mass and amusing mega Norman farmhouse. and amusing mega Norman farmhouse, combined with very Midwestern detail in the arts and crafts art that are applied to various aspects of the building. The lake is not now as diverse as it has been in the past, but it could be a home for all of us on the lakeshore. Several independent engineer studies that you can look at on the internet, and also available at the NGO Evanston Lake House and Gardens, show it to be, to quote one of the studies, rock solid. And the amount of money that has been raised from small donations from citizens like me is already enough to apply the repairs that that particular report said would be necessary that are less than $300,000. The nonprofit has won public support for its plan developed with Eleanor Ravel, Chairman, Alderman of the Ward, if a lease is granted so that large donors can be involved. So I urge you to consider saving this very important building that is the only huge and glorious public space on, architectural space on the lakeshore for all of us to have as our lake home.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we've got Sarah Shawstock, then Eric Potters, it looks like, and then Marquise Weatherspoon?
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to speak as the fundraising consultant to the Evanston Lake House and Gardens. After the April vote against a lease, it was suggested informally by the mayor and some aldermen that if the group could iron out the lease and show fundraising of at least $1 million in one year, council might revisit the matter. So I signed on at the beginning of June. In just two weeks, we have generated new pledges, mainly five-figure gifts adding up to $50,000, so $160,000 in all in pledges at this point. Total cash gifts have also risen to $26,500, both positive signs. The Lighthouse, Lake House Garden offer of an option payment can move the community back from the current impasse. Accepting the $15,000 needed for one year's maintenance and allowing one year to raise $1 million would allow both proof of concept and initiation of some of the envisioned programs, in turn, positioning the group to seek foundation grants. Pledge growth shows support of the plan. The vision is well received, the campaign's gaining momentum. But the gifts are smaller than if we had an executed lease, affirming what the Lake House Board found in 2017 and why they didn't undertake active fundraising at that time. Lake House and Garden has not-
You need to wrap up in like 10 seconds.
Not failed, it has just started to be raising the money. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Is it Erica, or I've got an Eric Potters or Podins? Podins, okay. And then Marquise?
Eric Potters, I'm from Morton Grove, and I'll have to be under a minute, so I'll just be brief. Mayor Hagerty, I'd like to invite you out to Morton Grove Days. Our mayor's going to be in a band called Face the Music. There's a couple aldermen here that might remember me from a long time ago. I had some issues at the beach at Lighthouse. I had talked to Alderman Ravel, I think, last year, March. We had spoken about some loose dogs. I'd also like to inform you guys, I won't tell you my position on Harley Clark Mansion, I've been going to that beach for over 30 years, but on Wednesday, I saw six people sneak in the north side of the beach. I saw three people with solo cups, I'm not sure what they were drinking. Then on Thursday, everybody was out of the water. I was just doing my training and my laps and what have you. Some kids started to throw some stones, and they tried to hit me. I walked off the beach, I walked up to the father, I said, "This is a public beach, I guess I can't swim here," proceeded to leave. As I was leaving, some kids started yelling, and then I heard the lifeguard yelling, and as I was leaving the beach, the four lifeguards that actually heard him were looking down at their smartphones. So I have now done a Freedom of Information Act request with the Clerk's Office, and I said it to the clerk, basically, or your assistant, I think, if you had any questions, to do it via email. He proceeded to call me. He then proceeded to follow it up by email. I'm doing a Freedom of Information Act request, which will become public. I have the request number, but it's public, so if you want to look it up, it's there. And again, I have concerns more so with the beach than Lighthouse Mansion, which I think should stay. I'm not sure if there's environmental concern, environmental concerns, or if there was a life safety study done on the building for possibly asbestos, contamination, mold, what have you, but it should be restored. Thank you.
Great, thank you, thank you, Eric, and I'm sorry, sorry about that situation. Marquise Weatherspoon, then Barbara Bearwin Riley, and then Bennett Johnson.
Good evening, all elected officials. I'm here tonight to ask for your reconsideration for the budget cuts for the youth and young adults division and also the summer food program. First off, the youth and young adult division has been instrumental in our community, the Evanston community, the Fifth Ward, and all over, because they provide a service that is not just limited to the walls of the city of Evanston. They go beyond and above everything that they are called to do, and are natural leaders to the children in our community, the men and the women. Some of these young men come from fatherless homes, and as they look at the example of the young men that are in Kevin Brown's group, he, they give a example of what a successful black man can be, and that is very important for a young man to see, that he does not have to be limited to the things that are around him and to be a product of his environment. Also, it would be detrimental to take away that, it would be detrimental to take away that program, given the fact of its good effects that it has had on our youth and young adults. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Marquise. We've got Barbara, and then Bennett Johnson, then Tom Riley.
Hello, my name is Barbara Bearwin Riley from Ward Six. I am disheartened to once again be speaking to the City Council about preserving and maintaining our city treasure on the lake, the Harley Clark Mansion. Over the many, 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 many years, hundreds of my fellow Evanstonians have made their support and voices known through petitions, ideas, suggestions, and plans to move forward for an educational, cultural center for the community. Unfortunately, it has become clear that you have no intention of honoring your promise to work with the Evanston Lake House towards that end. What happened to the $250,000 that you were going to spend to restore it? Your word means nothing, and it should be noted as such. It was my understanding that the elected council represented their constituents' strong will. However, that does not seem to be the case here. Few of us are privileged enough to have our own architecturally significant homes on the lakefront. But as Evanstonians, we can all take pride in having our beautiful community home at the Harley Clark Mansion to enrich our lives with cultural and educational programming. I am asking you to honor your pledge and continue the plans to keep Harley Clark as a community asset.
Thank you.
Please consider that.
Thank you. Next up, we've got Bennett Johnson, Tom Riley, then Mark Gasparra.
My name is Bennett Johnson, I live in the Ninth Ward, and I rise on a point of personal privilege, because I lived at 570 Milburn from the age of seven until I went to Haven School. So I'm very familiar with the Harley Clark House and the area around there. The problem with the concept of green space is that it is approved and supported by the millionaires in the city of Evanston. And a community service house, if we restore Harley Clark, would be a place where the 100,000 areas to go. More importantly, it would give access to the children and citizens, the 100,000 areas, but also the black and brown citizens of our city that have no real access to the beaches right now. The problem, of course, has to do with collegiality. I've spent a lot of time in politics, and collegiality works in a legislative group where you tend to vote for your friend or associate because you expect help from them later on. I'm here on pleading for the 90%, 90% of the citizens of this town that want to keep Harley Clark. And it's not, and we can prove that, we can prove that, Ann, because we got those signatures in a matter of two or three days for the 2100. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bennett. Next up, next up, we've got Tom Riley, then Mark Gasparra, and then Michael Ward.
Hi, my name, my name is Tom Riley, I live in the Sixth Ward, and I'm a 40-year resident of Evanston. Harley Clark has not been the City Council or the city's finest hour. First, Mayor Tisdale tried to give it away to a private developer, a public asset to a private developer. That didn't go over so well. Second, the city agreed to spend $250,000 to, to maintain it and fix some things that needed to be fixed. As far as I know, that's never been done. The $250,000 has sort of disappeared. You can correct me on that if I'm wrong. Seems like the City Council has not negotiated in good faith with the Lake House Group and not given them time to raise the money that they need. Fourth, the city seems to find money for projects such as irrespective of citizen opinion. For example, storefronts, we can spend millions of dollars on storefronts on Howard Avenue, but we can't spend anything on Harley Clark, not even the 250, that was the 250,000 that was supposed to have been spent. And then, as other people said, if we destroy it, it's gone forever. It's, it's something worth preserving.
Great, thank you, thank you, Tom. All right, we've got Mark Gasparra, Michael Ward, then Lindy Kornner.
How do you do? Mark Gasparra from the Sixth Ward, I've been in Evanston for 37 years, also an Evanston business owner, downtown Evanston here. I just want to make three, well, first, I want to thank the, the council, because I know what a tough job it is and what a responsibility it is to the entire community. Three points I want to make. Number one, the majority of Evanston's people oppose demolition. Number two, preservation of Harley Clark can provide year-round outreach. Number three, the resolution that opposes, that promotes demolition opposes public will and should be rejected. Suggested approach for moving forward is to take advantage of the greater public awareness that exists now, and to fully consider options that are in line with the community's will. So I just want to reinforce these three points. The majority of, and I have to say, I'm relatively new to this process, so I did the research on this. I looked at the opinion poll of the 1,523 respondents, over 67%, 67% responded that they wanted the Harley Clark Mansion restored and renovated and used for public use, number one. It provides year-round outreach because it is a shelter. We don't have the best climate in Evanston year-round, and this provides year-round educational opportunities. And number three, the public will should be respected, and this proposal to demolish should be rejected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next up, we've got Michael, Michael Ward, Lindy Kornner, Janad Rizki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Michael Ward, I'm from the Eighth Ward. I'm a 44-year resident of Evanston. And on the Harley Clark issue, I've had discussions with some of the members of the council and with the Evanston Lake House and Garden Group, and I'd like to just offer two observations based on my 30 years of experience on representing people between individuals and government entities. First, I looked at, reviewed the, the video of the April 9th City Council meeting, and I think the points taken by the council members regarding the lease are well taken, but I do think that those issues are resolvable. Second, which is perfectly obvious to everybody, relations between the renovation group and the City Council have broken down. This is unfortunate. It is not unique in public issues with, with the city and other forms of government, but I think what needs to be done is everybody needs to take one step back and, and take a deep breath. I think these issues can be worked out. I think it's a little, it's premature to consider demolition of the building, and I would offer to the city and to the renovation group my services, if they wished, as, as a buffer or as a guidance to talk between the two, because that's what I did professionally as a lawyer. Although I'm trying to be somewhere retired, but that doesn't work out as well, I keep getting pro bono cases. But I would, just wrapping up, I would say, this is a valuable asset to the city, I think everybody recognizes that, and it's important to all the city people and to generations to come. For generations, this is going to stand, you know, with the house or without the house. So I appreciate your consideration, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Michael. All right, Lindy Kornner? Is there somebody Lindy, maybe, this one looks like I'm reading it correctly, Lindy Kornner, K-O-R-N-E-R? All right, Janad Rizki, why don't you come on up?
Janad Rizki, I want to say with my one poster here tonight, terminate Mr. Bob Kowitz's contracts. Nine years of his mistakes are enough while he has to demolish the city budget, and now he's trying to demolish Harley Clark. The city budget memo, in my opinion, is nonsense. We need a new city manager, and we need an outside independent audit of this budget. When Mr. Bob Kowitz came here, the budget had problems, now we are in a state of crisis. We face a huge property tax increase, or it'll be other taxes. If you look at the memo, and I'm sure Mr. Bob Kowitz hasn't explained it, you add it all up, it's over 50%. And basically, I believe it's not these programs for kids and everything else, as we all know, it's all the mistakes, the waste, and things like that. I mean, we have a $7 million overrun, basically Fountain Square, it's $7 million, $7 million of our money here. That's what it is. We have Robert Crown, Mr. Bob Kowitz claimed he could build it for zero at one time, it's up to $53 million. And then I have a list of things here, anyone can see these, of all the mistakes here, 25% really of mistakes. This is what it's about, it's not about Harley Clark. It's all the mistakes that sit here. So that's really what I have to say, and I think the citizens of Evanston should really understand that. Harley Clark is insignificant to this whole thing. It's all the mess that sits in the budget.
Thank you, thank you, Janad. All right, next up, we've got Deborah Lawrence, then Jeff Smith, then Wanda Walker.
My name is Deborah Lawrence, and I reside in the Sixth Ward. I'm here because I do care about the mansion, and I do believe it's an asset. I was also here when the lease was voted down, and so I thought to myself, what are some other ways we can save this mansion? And this is what I came up with. So I thank you for listening to my idea. Harley Clark property is named the People's Mansion for a reason. Though demolition seems imminent, I believe there is a way to save this estate and maintain it through pride of ownership. We do not need a 30-year lease and millions of dollars to bring this house back to life if we consider reconditioning it for a co-op indoor farm. The city could acquire a new revenue stream by leasing out parcels to local farmers, local restaurants, local grocery stores, clubs, schools, et cetera. This could also be a pilot program for other neglected buildings in Evanston, and a learning opportunity for everyone. Here are some key benefits. Vertical farming produces significantly more food per square foot and conserves water. More fresh produce can enhance Evanston's existing food programs. Keeping it ultra-local offers fresher food and less waste. And finally, keeping it local reduces our carbon footprint. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Deborah. Next up, we've got Jeff Smith, then Wanda Walker, then Kathy Roberson.
In the room of Harley Clark, just north of the foyer, the walls are paneled in hardwood. If you look closely, you'll see that the surfaces are regular because those panels were hand-chiselled. In another room, the slate of the floors is a green hue that contractors assure me you can't even find anymore. For me, conversation about this property has never been about saving floors and walls so much as preserving for public access the only lakefront mansion between Chicago and Lake Cook Road that's not owned by the 1%, as Bennett and others have so eloquently put it. But, but every artifact of history is a teachable moment. Hand-finished walls and antique slate are just two of many features that make this recognized landmark unique and literally irreplaceable. Wherever I travel, I've seen civic efforts to leverage cultural assets, and communities are working on historic local structures to successfully restore them for- are working on historic local structures to successfully restore them for imaginative public use and economic development. A truly progressive city would be doing the same here.[606.04][606.04](APPLAUSE). I'll finish up. Demolition of this landmark, by contrast, is a bleak, dismal, and literally destructive proposal that would not only be an aggravated offense against residents' hard work and vision, but a crime against culture. It should not see the light of day, and the city should go back and finish the unfinished business of good faith negotiations with the Lake House group. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.[634.16][634.16](APPLAUSE). All right, next up, we've got Wanda, Wanda Walker, Kathy Roberson, and then Carl Klein. Do we have Wanda in the house? All right, are you Wanda or Kathy?
I'm Kathy.
Come on up, Kathy. All right, then we've got Carl Klein, and then Mark Rolfs.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Roberson. I'm the principal of Haven Middle School, and I'm here in support of the young youth and young division here. I've been really fortunate to work with most of the individuals personally in our building. They've assisted our students, and while 8th graders are at the very beginning of the cusp of the age of the kids that they work with, their impact is very, very powerful. Our partnership started three years ago when a student who was new to Evanston began working with the outreach workers. The members of that division joined the family at a meeting that, or hearing that we were having at the district. And as a group, we were able to collaborate, brainstorm, and problem-solve. And from this meeting on, Haven and the City of Evanston Youth and Young Adult Division have been working together. The partnership is really built on trust and mutual respect. Our trust and respect for the outreach workers, their knowledge and their ability to build the relationships with our students, their trust and respect for us and the promise of education. Our youths and their families build trust in a community that we create together. Trust and respect can be hard to come by, and these individuals know our community. They know it well. I think about half of them went to Haven, so I might be a little biased. They know our community, and they know the challenges that our children are facing. Our children need to be able to make connections so that they are able to interrupt the cycle of violence and hate, and this division has really had their finger on the pulse of the Evanston young adult community.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.[753.13][753.13](APPLAUSE). Next up, we've got Carl Klein, Mark Rolfs, and then Vincent Walker.
Good evening. Let's see, I'm a lifetime Evanstonian. Growing up in this community with its historic architecture helped inspire me to go and study historic preservation. We need to think of preservation as being stewards of our assets so that future generations can appreciate them. I urge you to listen to the vast majority of our city and preserve Harley Clark and the Jen's Jensen Gardens so that it can be accessible for future generations of all Evanstonians, and so that it can continue to be the Lake House and Gardens for all Evanstonians. Maybe it's time to have a little faith and take this to the people. I support Alderman suffered in formulating a referendum to prevent demolition and to move forward with adaptive reuse of Harley Clark and Jen's Jensen Gardens. Also, it is very disconcerting that historic preservation review is threatened. Instead of cutting this, we should be expanding it. There's a lot more to do in this city to preserve our heritage and make sure that the story of all Evanstonians is told and preserved. I truly believe that historic preservation can be a powerful economic engine which has cultural, educational, environmental, and social benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Carl.[842.32][842.32](APPLAUSE). We've got Mark Rolfs, then Vincent Walker, and then David Lightshaw.
Good evening. I'm Mark Rolfs. I'm a 28-year member, resident of the 6th Ward. I too would like to see Harley Clark remain in Evanston. However, I'm here to speak in favor of deconstructing it and, if necessary, demolishing it. As a businessperson, simple back-of-the-envelope calculations show how difficult it will be to get an unsubsidized use of the building going forward. Not only is it with regard to the restoration costs, but also the ongoing operating costs. I just don't see it happening. So as a result, I am in favor of hopefully it being deconstructed, and if not, being demolished and returned to the state that's been proposed. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mark. We've got Vincent Walker. Come on up, and then David Lightshaw, and then Priscilla Giles.
Hi, I'm a little short.
You can pull it down. I'm short too, yes.
Okay. I'm here to speak on behalf of the outreach program. I'm a 30-year resident here. I have property in both wards, 5th and 2nd Ward. I had no idea that there was going to be a cut, a budget cut for that program. However, we've gotten three guys gangfully employed in Glencoe. So that's where I've been for the last 29 years, and they're very well-trained in that area. I'm kind of just blown away from that to see that that would even be considered to be taken away or have that budget cut from that. However, I'm going to be short. I have a whole lot of charismatic things to say. However, I just, I'm very compassionate about that because a lot of young guys that are working, well, there are three guys that are there now that are on full-time. They started out making $20,000, now they're making $50,000. They're no longer baby daddies, they're fathers. So that's kind of where I am with that. So I'd just like to have you all reconsider that and, you know. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out, Vincent.[977.13][977.13](APPLAUSE). All right, David, then we've got Priscilla Giles, and then Ray Friedman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I'm David Whitechew, Evanston resident, 7th Ward. You will very soon this evening be engaging in very difficult deliberations and votes on pending budget issues. Everyone will agree that there are a host of worthy issues and projects that require funding, but they're going to be competing for the city's all-too-finite resources. In this context, I wholeheartedly endorse and ask your support for the pending proposal to renaturalize the present Harley Clark grounds. Every other alternative has been carefully considered in recent years, and there are none that have proven feasible for a variety of reasons. A proposal to convert the center to a pay-for-play event center is not inclusive, it's exclusive. It's going to exclude people of moderate and low-income means. They're not going to be able to afford it. Wealthy people are going to be able to do that. Accepting the offered contributions for full funding for renaturalization costs the city nothing, removes all future risk for the city, frees up the funding that otherwise continues to be required for ongoing maintenance of this deteriorating structure. This is very likely the sole easy budgetary decision you are able to make this evening, and I hope you do so. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next up is Priscilla Giles, then Ray Friedman, then Audrey Neffinger.
I want to cede my time to whoever is in charge, who is ever in favor of saving Harley Clark and the youth and young adult programs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Priscilla.[1072.58][1072.58](APPLAUSE). I appreciate the brevity. Ray Friedman, and then Audrey Neffinger, and then Patrick Donnelly.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty and city council. I'm Ray Friedman from the 2nd Ward. It seems to be an issue with priorities here. Looking at the priority-based budget, I don't understand why you have only chosen 46 programs out of 152 to look at and review. Shouldn't we be looking at all 152 programs? And how does Robert Crown project, which is to cost $52 to $55 million, fit into those priorities? And lastly, why would we want to demolish a 91-year-old landmark that people have used and loved for years and would not cost the city anything to keep and maintain? Please keep this treasure, the Harley Clark mansion, for everyone to use and love for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.[1142.13][1142.13](APPLAUSE). All right, we've got Audrey, then Patrick Donnelly, and then last speaker will be Doreen Price.
Good evening, mayor, and members of the council. I'm afraid I'm not from any ward at all. I live in Chicago. However, I grew up in Evanston. I went to ETHS, I went to Northwestern, and I've loved this community for a long time. I started coming to the Harley Clark when I was 14. I learned to be an artist there. Later, I learned to teach there. I taught there for 15 years. I know that building inside and out. It's so beautiful. It's so solid. And I was there quite recently, actually, because I came to the mandatory open house for people who might have ideas about what to do with it. And I do have many ideas for things to do with it in case anybody needs ideas, but first we have to save it. And I've donated money to the Lake House group because they are very committed and very energetic, and they really, really want this to happen, and so do I. I want it to be a place that continues. It's an inspiring place. I want it to inspire more people. I want it to inspire people who aren't even born yet. So I just came to beg. I came to beg, plead, and throw myself at your mercy. Many of you might have made up your minds, but if you haven't, just stop for a second and just take a breath because you can always destroy something later, but right now you can save it.
Thank you, Audrey.[1244.01][1244.01](APPLAUSE). All right, next up is Patrick Donnelly, and then Doreen Price is the last speaker.
Hello. It's hard to say anything more emotional than what you've already heard tonight. So I would probably just stand up here and just repeat this over and over again. It's the last and only city building on the lakefront. That has to hold value somehow because there's, if you rip it down, there's no more buildings on the lakefront. So this plan was born out of seeing that it was the last and only building on the lakefront and saying, why don't we just open it up for the community? We're a community lakefront.[1284.25][1284.25](APPLAUSE). It's the last and only city building on the lakefront, and you guys are talking about ripping it down. The plan we brought to you was to rehab two city buildings to create usable space on the lakefront. So if you're on the fence about this, just let it sit. Don't demo it because when it's gone, there's no more public access to shelter on the lakefront, in my opinion. The Jen's Jensen family called me and said, please don't let them rip it down. That was coming from the Jen's Jensen family, who so many people stand behind and say they want the building down because it'll enhance the Jen's Jensen Garden and the dunes. That family said, please, don't rip it down. So just let it sit while this calms, maybe. That would be a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.[1333.29][1333.29](APPLAUSE). All right, and last up, we've got Doreen Price. Oh, excuse me, and then I have one that was missed earlier that's here.
Oh, sorry. I'm Doreen Price in the 7th Ward. I've been there 35 years, which makes me a senior senior of sorts. And preservation is kind of, our seniors preserving what's important and of value to us, and we're challenged by the economics. We all are. And even the people who are gifted with revenue and the like are challenged also. But in terms of priorities, we have to keep and make this work as a community, and the people who are in the fortunate position like I was before, earlier, to give, to give maybe even more, and that the people who are giving as much as they can now are giving more in terms of their time, which is very, very important. And as example are the committees, and I see that as a free gift to the city of expert advice. And I think that communities maybe could be integrated in terms of a cross-functional evaluation or a cross-functional matrix, or even having liaisons with the mayor's office so that A talks to B at a level that preamps problems later. And then also in terms of litigation, as everyone knows, I'm fond of, let's reduce litigation, and perhaps the lawyers who are retired would like to see less need for pro bono, but pro bono's going up. So I would suggest that we start looking at chargebacks where something like, that makes a lot of money, what I've been told, is permits. And if permits are so lucrative, are they lucrative if they're not enforcing and helping people that end up having to sue or actually doing what the city could have done for them, who they can't afford and want to age in place? If they had a chargeback and all of a sudden the cost of permits in terms of enforcing them becomes a priority. And I could see better enforcement being a win-win, less litigation, less hassling and stress for the residents who are trying to stay here. And I want to say thank you for having people write in and show that there's certain things that there's a threat. And social services are just super important. To say we can't have any of it when it's been reduced is not where the community needs to come together, and social services are the way to get people to talk together.
Thank you. All right, and our last speaker is Julia Backrock.
Thank you. My name's Julia Backrock, and I'm a planner and historian with considerable expertise on Jen's Jensen. I previously served as the Chicago Park District's planning supervisor for over 20 years and now have my own consulting practice. I have strong ties with Evanston, and I'm an ETHS graduate. I'm here to implore you not to allow the demolition of the Harley Clark mansion.[1511.33][1511.33](APPLAUSE). The idea that you can destroy the Harley Clark house and preserve the Jensen landscape is ludicrous. The landscape features were designed as outdoor rooms for the house. Without the building, they have no meaning. The mansion is an important asset which could be enjoyed by the community while also generating revenue. It seems ridiculous that the proposal has been presented under the guise of restoring endangered dunes. Much of the Lake Michigan shoreline is being naturalized with dune plantings. It's not necessary to raise historic buildings to do so. The Chicago Park District created a major dune natural area surrounding the historic 63rd Street bathing pavilion. Both the building and dunes have been restored without conflict. Evanston is a special place because of its historic architecture, and its landmarks help preserve that character. Obviously, this is something that means a lot to your community. You can tell from the support for the building. Please do not allow this important tradition to be destroyed. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Julia.[1586.83][1586.83](APPLAUSE). All right, that concludes public comment. Thank you, everybody, for so eloquently and passionately speaking on issues and your point of view on the particular issues that you spoke about. We're going to move now into the agenda. We've got some payroll items. First up, Alderman Fleming, given this comes generally out of APW. Would you like to move 1.2 and 1.3, which are, we'll hold, we'll have to do 1.3 as a separate vote, but 1.1 and 1.2?
1.1 and 1.2, sure. I move that the city council accept payroll dated May 14, 2018 through May 27, 2018 in the amount of $2,885,136.78. I also, we should do that separate, right?
Yeah, do the second one, and then we'll do a vote.
Okay. Also, I move that we approve 1.2 bills list June 19, 2018 in the amount $4,759,641.95, as well as the BMO credit card activity period ending April 26, 2018 in the amount of $238,434.4 for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
City clerk?
No, I have.
Okay, Alderman Rainey. I didn't see your light. The light's not working, or did you not put it? Okay.
I can't reach my light.
I got you, Alderman Rainey.
I, Mr. Mayor and Madam Chair, I have some questions about pages 5 and 6 on the Capital Improvements Fund. I have concerns sometimes about expenditures made with bond funds. And in this case, I'm concerned about, I love spending money on art and murals, but I don't really think that murals ought to be paid for with bond funds. So that's one item. And I also don't think that we should be spending money for our postage meter out of bond funds. So those are the two issues I have there. All the other ones are absolute natural bond fund expenditures, alleys, construction, solar panel installations, those kinds of things, repairs for the service center. But those items really, murals are not long, I mean, murals need upgrading constantly, you know, and a postage meter, I just don't get that. So I'm not going to take these off, but I wish our staff would pay more attention to those kind of things. I don't think they should be on there. So I just want to make a point of that. And we've had this conversation before.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Rainey, members of the council, good evening. You know, certainly, I think the issues with the art installation... You know, certainly, I think the issues with the art installations are really a judgment call of the council's preferences that that not be done in the future. We'll certainly work on that. The postage machine also, it's a $10,000 roughly issue. It's probably on the low end of that. So, certainly, we can make those changes in the future.
But I don't think it has to do with the amount of money. I think it has to do with the item.
It's the nature of the expense.
The nature of the expenditure, yeah.
And again, I think past practice, there's separate issues. The past practice on the murals is that we're improving existing infrastructure with a life that would expend, you know, certainly, I think the murals, Ms. Blasey is here somewhere.
And to be honest, I don't know the kind of mural it is. So, it might be a long-term, you know, permanent, maybe it's a concrete structure that is going to be more permanent than...
And that's the case with the murals that are here. But again, Alderman Rainey, it's certainly a judgment call if the council's more comfortable spending operating dollars out of that, that's perfectly fine in the future.
If it's that kind of mural, but, all right, that I would understand.
Just the Emerson Ridge Green Bay, the two large concrete walls that are part of the embankments there. So, this is, I would say, among the largest public murals just from a square footage standpoint that we have in the community. And so, we're making a long-term improvement to that capital.
I'll take it back then. That would be different. But the postage meter, not so much.
All right. Seeing no more lights for discussion, Clerk Reed, could you take the role, please, on 1.1 and 1.2?
Five years, eight years?
There was a second.
Oh, excuse me, I did, I had a second on that. Who was the second?
You.
I think I seconded it.
Alderman Russelms. Alderman Fleming?
Yes.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Russelms.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Raval.
Aye.
All right, agenda items, 1.1 payroll, 1.2 bills list, pass the city council, 9 to 0. Alderman Fleming, could you move 1.3?
Yes, I move that the council approve the Amazon BMO credit card activity ending April 26, 2018 in the amount of $13,821.85.
Second.
Okay. Seeing no lights, Clerk Reed, could you take the role, please?
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk? Alderman Braithwaite? Alderman Wynn? Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Russelms?
Aye.
Alderman Raval?
Aye.
All right, item 1.3, Amazon BMO credit card activity passes the city council, 8 to 0 with one abstention, Alderman Sufferton. City manager, could you take us to item 2, the 2019 budget update, the projection survey results and next steps?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We're here this evening to give you an update on the process that we began a few months ago, working on the 2019 budget. Ashley King, our budget and finance manager is here. We'll start the presentation. But I'd like to make a few comments about where we stand and perhaps a little bit of overview of what we have learned so far. The idea of priority-based budgeting is not a new one for this community. We did this once before during my tenure as city manager in 2012. And really, the purpose is to get a sense from the community, from the council, from our employees, of all the many services that we do that are really critical, which are the most critical and those that perhaps are toward the bottom of that list, to get a sense, again, from all of our constituency groups as to are there opportunities for some additional work and review there. What we learned from the survey, and you'll hear the results in detail in a moment, is that the Evanston community really likes what we do. They like the services we provide. And most specifically, we've heard through the survey that the focus that we have on social programs, on human services, unlike many of our neighbor communities, is something that's important to Evanston and is something that we should continue. Our challenge remains, however, how we do this in an environment where our expenditures continue to increase, our ability to raise revenue continues to decrease, and the community looks to see the services that we have and wants us to continue them and in some cases, increase them. So, we're here this evening to talk about what we've discovered in the survey and to outline our next steps. I want to call out one particular portion, and you'll hear more from Kimberly Richardson and Dr. Effiem, about the issue of our human services and our social service programs. Loud and clear, we've heard from the community they're important. Loud and clear, my recommendation to the council is we keep them. I think our challenge is how, our challenge is, are we doing them in a way that makes the most sense for the communities that we serve? And if there's any opportunities for us to be smarter in the way that we do them, that we should take advantage of that. So, I am proposing this evening that we move forward with additional review, not only of the human services, social services that were included among the 46 items, but also all the other human and social services that we do and come back to the council prior to the budgets submitted to you in October, come back in September with some findings. I think it's very important to tell the community and to tell you that it was never the intention to eliminate any of these critical services, but it was the intention really to get a sense of where they stand. We've heard that clearly from the community. And now, I think our challenge is how will we continue to provide them at a high level in order that we serve all residents in Evanston. So, again, you'll hear a little bit more about that in a moment. But our challenge remains. Our challenge remains that we balance our annual operating budget for current services with existing revenue. Our challenge remains that we adequately fund our pensions, not only for our police officers and firefighters, but also for our general government employees. This is a challenge that is not going away. The dollars continue to increase and again, in an atmosphere where there is less willingness for raising fees and charges and taxes, willingness to continue to keep services. These costs associated with what I call services rendered, the men and women of the police and fire department, our general government employees have served us, but the costs associated with those pensions continue and we must have a way to fund those pensions as well as fund our continuing services. We also remain challenged for funding adequately our capital debt. We have done a not great job as a community over a long period of time, not using cash to fund capital investment. Instead, we have issued debt and we continue annually to pay off that debt. Those capital debts for, again, services rendered, remain and as we are faced tonight, talking about Harley-Clark, talking about the replacement of the Robert Crown Center, challenged with other older historic buildings, including this building, including the Noyce Cultural Arts Center, including our police and fire headquarters. Those are capital projects in the many, many millions of dollars which we have not really even begun to talk about, but dollars will be needed for those as well. So, we need to look at our capital, our pensions, our capital debt, as well as our current expenses and do it all without raising taxes and fees significantly and without reducing services. A very, very, very tall order, but I believe we're continuing on a track that makes sense. Again, we want to continue to provide excellent services for our residents. Everything we do is important. Our challenge is how to pay for them moving forward. So, Mr. Mayor, with those introductory comments, I'd like to introduce Ashley, who will, and some of her colleagues, will take us through this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Clerk Reed and city manager Bob Kowits. My name is Ashley King. I'm the budget and finance manager and I'm back to continue the conversation we began in March regarding priority-based budgeting. So, the agenda for tonight's presentation is first, an update on the 2019 budget projections for both the general fund and the other funds and some of the issues that city manager Bob Kowits just brought up. Then, we're going to look at the actual survey results and discuss next steps for both this kind of outreach portion as well as the 2019 budget. So, getting started, when we started this conversation, again, on March 19, we presented kind of preliminary 2019 general fund projections. We said we thought there would be a deficit of about $3.1 million. We've been continuing to refine those numbers. We have additional information between then and now with what we've been, what's been happening in 2018. And we're coming back to you tonight with these refined projections at a proposed, or anticipated deficit of $2.9 million. So, these are a lot of the items that make up that difference. So, as you can see, we started at the top with the 2018 general fund budget, ending at the bottom with an increase of $1.6 million over that amount. And that's what we're looking at for the baseline of 2019. First item, we looked at wage increases. We just did an average over the past 10 years. As you know, all of the unions are up for negotiation, so none of this is set, but we used the information that we could glean from historical actuals. Since the last meeting, we also heard that IMRF was lowering the city's rate because of 2017 investment income was higher than anticipated. So, we're actually able to decrease that expense. We're looking at an increase in health insurance of about 5%. An increase for one of our bonds for the early retirement incentive. 2019 will be the final year that we're paying off that bond issuance. The general fund makes transfers to other funds and we usually try to match that transfer, especially to the fleet fund, with the general wage increase. So, we just added those numbers below. We decreased the transfer from the general fund to the solid waste fund, which I will talk about separately, but that kind of happened during the 2018 budget discussions. And then, again, we looked at a five-year average of what we increased on non-personnel expenses year over year, and that was about 1.5%. So, this is how we got to the preliminary estimates of 2019 expenses. Now, taking a look at 2019 revenues. We're looking for 2019 revenues overall at a decrease of about $1.9 million over the 2018 budget. A list of all of these revenues and how we came up with them, along with the historical actuals, is on page 45 of the packet, but these are just some of them that we wanted to call out here. First was sales tax. Sales tax has kind of been, we're trying to better align with actuals and that's been decreasing for the past few years. So, we are decreasing the budget in 2019 for basic and home rule sales tax. Electric and natural gas utility taxes, again, based on weather, based on increases in energy efficiency, we've seen less revenue for these line items, so we propose a decrease here. With the same rate on the transportation network provider tax, we believe we could increase this revenue budget. In 2018, so far, we've received more revenue than we anticipated, so we think we can safely increase that line item. And then, with the closure of Washington National TIP at the end of 2018, we'll no longer have that fund to transfer money into the general fund. So, those are some of the items that make up the revised revenue budget for 2019. So, if you take our estimate for expenses and revenues, we're looking at a deficit of about $2.9 million right now. $2.9 million, that's operating revenue. So, that's kind of the day-to-day. But what we would like you to consider also is the idea that we should maybe be putting more money in the general fund reserves. So, it is a city policy, as well as a best practice from GASB, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and the Generally Accepted Accounting Principles, to have two months of reserve, two months of expenses in reserves. So, that 16.6% of your expense budget should be in reserves for the general fund. That's been a city policy that we always strive to get to. 2017, we ended the year at $13.3 million in reserves. We're anticipating 2018, we budgeted with a surplus, which is great, we could add to that reserve. So, at the end of this year, we're looking at about $13.9 million. However, our expense budget was $114 million, which means that that 16.6% should be almost $19 million. So, we're short by about $5 million. If we'd like to make up this difference in the next three years, staff would recommend a contribution of about $1.6 million a year to then bring us back up to that reserve 16.6 recommended number.
Ashley, Alderman Braithwaite had a question or comment?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. And you're probably going to get to this, but I'm a little bit curious. Two questions first. How much do we have in the parking reserve fund? And if you're going to get to it, then, fine. And with that question, what are the rules and regulations with how much money we have? Because my memory tells me we have more in the parking reserve fund than we do in our general balance fund.
I don't know that we have more in dollar months. We could look that up and I will get back to you. I don't have that number offhand. And we do have a separate policy for some of the other funds. So, that's on the budget. We can be sure and get that to you. Anything else?
Yeah, I had a question about the first chart. What is the 10-year average for labor costs? You factored it out at 1.8 or 1.9 million total, but I was just curious.
It was 2.6%.
Okay.
And that also included kind of step increases in there, too.
Okay. Alderman Rainey?
My question was, what was the 10-year average increase on labor, which was part of that first slide? That was about 1.8, 1.9 million. And it was 2.6%. Alderman Rainey?
Is the reason we don't have a number in the surface lot permits because it's the parking fund? I don't understand why. You have $160,000 in 2018 and the 2019 projection is nothing. And then, minus $160,000.
I'm sorry, could you tell me what page you're on, please?
I'm on, I'm in the general fund revenues that you just left, the one right before. The 2019 highlights of the, you know, general fund revenues.
Page 45, surface lot permits.
Yeah, 45.
Yeah, you're talking about the one that had $200,000 the year before and went to zero?
It had $160,000, right?
$160,000, yeah.
I believe surface lot permits are, revenues go into the parking fund?
Alex Thorpe, our revenue manager.
I brought that up because of Peter's question.
Yeah, so this one was called out because we did a lot increase for 2018 and we called it out specifically to show the increase. In 2019, we put it in with the rest of the lot permit. So, it's kind of lumped back in, kind of with the whole lot permits process.
You're showing the difference is $160,000 less, but that's not true.
Right, it's just a line item. There's $160,000 more in a different line item. This was just a carryover from the 2018 budget that we corrected for the 2019.
So, you're showing $160,000 less because you're using 2018 as your baseline in which you're calculating 2019 expenses?
It's actually moving line items. So, it was in that line item for 18 to call out specifically. In 19, we already have existing line items for all the lots. So, this got basically consolidated into the existing lot accounts.
Correct, which is over in the transportation, over in transportation account or something like that?
No, there's actually parking lot.
Parking, okay.
Why is the cigarette tax higher? Can you explain that?
Cigarette tax is just, we actually get that money from the county. So, the county charges, they put the cigarette stamp on the packs of cigarettes sold in the city of Evanston. And this is the money that we've been receiving from the county. So, it seems to be that smoking is on an uptick. For sales of cigarettes, I should say.
That's good for our budget. It's good for our budget, bad for the health department. I mean, that's very bizarre, very bizarre. And liquor tax, this is a problem. Liquor, the liquor tax is down.
Liquor tax, we anticipate just based on actuals that it's, again, kind of the 2019 was taking raw numbers that we've been seeing on the audited actuals and basically using it as a base. So, there's no kind of rosy, we hope to see new businesses come in and...
Wait, wait, Alex. But you're showing that in 2017, is 2017 showing an actual of $3,9899? Is that an actual?
That's an actual, yeah. That's just a rounded.
What about $3,120,000 for 2018?
That's the budget.
That's the budget. Is it, are your receipts coming in?
We're tracking slightly below that. It really depends in sort of the holiday season.
So, your $3 million is a guesstimate?
It's a projection for budget.
All right, I'm counting on your being wrong.
I hope. I'll drink to that.
Alderman Fisk?
Everybody has to drink to that. All right.
Yeah, I'm, so when we approved Bennies, there was an estimate for the sales tax for Bennies, an estimate for sales tax for Target. So, what do you, what do you do when, after we approve something? How do you handle that in the budget?
Those sometimes aren't straight numbers. There's different ways to kind of forecast that, especially with the Target downtown. It might cannibalize from other businesses. So, in some instance, you might not shop at point A but go to point B. So, it's really, in a sense, revenue neutral. But like, sort of like a Bennies that's filling in a large spot that has a large volume, that's a little bit, there's a little bit more complicated equation to that. We work with the economic development team, look at other surrounding communities, what it did to their bottom line, location, price. It's not as straightforward as a forecast. You think it's pretty complicated, so we kind of might plug in a number that Skokie or Willmount did this and they got $50,000. Based on the location, it might be similar, so we... Based on the location, it might be similar, so we project that.
And Alderman, Fisk, members of the council, specifically with Binny's, our plan is, once they have a more firm date for opening, really to sit with them and get a better sense of what they said. Again, as Alex has mentioned, our experience is the Thanksgiving to Christmas time period is a heavy liquor tax receipt area. Our estimates are that we'll see them in the, probably the mid-fall timeframe at this point, Binny's opening. And we'll, again, try, as Alex said, figure out how much will be new revenue and how much will be shifting from other sources. We've had, just while, we're talking about liquor tax, some interesting comments from our residents encouraging us to be a little creative with the tax rate, that if we are perhaps looking maybe to adjust the tax rate down, for example, on bulk liquor sales, might that increase overall sales? And would we then grow the revenue both at the sales tax level and the liquor tax level? So, our intention is to sit with the Binny's tax staff and kind of go through this. And as Mr. Thorpe said, these are estimates as we sit here the middle of June.
That's a great idea. Let's get back to the presentation where we're ready, Ms. King.
Yeah, why don't you mention?
I think it was Alderman, Brayth, what you asked about the parking reserve.
Yeah, I'm trying.
In the 2018 budget, we have ending at 3.4 million. So, it's in our budget.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we were talking about general fund reserves, and what this chart shows is kind of what is happening with general fund reserves. As you can see, the bottom number, I know there's a lot going on, we wanted to present a lot of information here. The bottom number are the actual dollars. So, in 2015, we had $10.7 million in the general fund reserve. By the end of this year, we're hoping to have just under $14 million in that reserve fund if we end this here with that $600,000 surplus that we budgeted. So, the actual dollars that we have in the reserve are increasing. That's almost a 30% increase. However, the entire general fund has gone up. One of the main reasons, as you can see in 2016, is because we have to start counting the pension funds within the general fund. So, we take the money now, previously pension revenue just went into the pension funds. Now, it comes into the general fund and is expensed out of the general fund into the pension funds. Because it's an expense of the general fund, that is now included in our base as we're calculating this 16.6%. So, now we just have a bigger number that we're trying to chase. Again, we are still recommending that we stick with the GASB and the GAAP recommendation of 16.6% and continue to increase the reserve by about $1.6 million a year for the next three years. Now, taking a look at other funds. Capital and debt service. For the past few years, we've been funding the capital fund, the CIP GO bond issuances at about $9 million a year, and that's, that's been pretty steady. And that helps us keep the debt service right around $12.5 million. So, we have bonds every year that drop off and we issue new bonds, and it remains steady and kind of easy to plan for, if you will. So, our current unabated or property tax levy-supported capital debt is $109 million. We are planning on coming back to you on Monday with a request for issuing another $9 million in just capital bonds through the GO bond issuance that comes for presentation on the 25th. Crown, as we've discussed, would clearly add to this debt service cost. By 2022, when we're past the interest-only phase of these bonds, we're looking at adding another $3 million to the annual debt service or bringing that up to about $15.5 million. This means that we, first of all, we need to ask you to increase the debt limit. The city has a debt policy of $113 million. We're bringing a resolution to you next Monday asking that you increase it to $150 million to account for the Crown Center project. And then we also have to come up with other revenue sources to pay for that Crown fund or come up with some other way of understanding and taking on that increase of $12.5 million up to $15.5 million going forward. And finally, we have a couple of other funds to discuss. The insurance fund is an internal service fund, which means that it's, the bills come out of the insurance fund, but it's just funded by every other fund that the city has. So, if expenses out of the insurance fund go up, it hits the capital fund, it hits any fund with people, it hits the general fund, it hits the parking fund, all those other funds. So, the insurance fund overall has health insurance, risk insurance, liability, workers' comp, a lot of different things are paid out of there. And with increases such as the health insurance increase we anticipated, it's going to require each other fund to make a greater contribution into the insurance fund moving forward. Again, if we don't increase these contributions into the insurance fund, we believe that this fund could be negative in the next three years by 2020. The solid waste fund. During the 2018 budget discussions, we, the council decided to institute a solid waste property tax line item. So, now we have that on the property tax bill and we are decreasing the general fund transfer to the solid waste fund and have slight increases proposed for the solid waste property tax. Again, this would bring it into a positive fund balance by the end of 2020. And finally, the fire pension funds. Some good news in the budget. Due to above-anticipated income revenue, we actually have the fire fund funded at 46% and the police fund funded over 50% at 52%. This is because we had an assumed rate of return of 6.25% and the actual rate of return for 2017 was over 10% for each of those funds. Moving forward, we're going to switch gears if there are no more questions about this part and talk about the survey results.
I have a question here. So, our fund, our cash reserve is below what GASB is suggesting that we have. Your proposal is for us to figure out a way to add 1.6 million a year for three years into that, bringing that to the 16%. So, the two-month reserve, being below that percentage right now and going out for bonds, whether it's the $9 million or the Crown bonds that the city is going to need, what impact do you think that's going to have right now on our bond rating? Do you have a sense?
We have calls with the rating agencies next Tuesday and Wednesday, the 26th and the 27th, to discuss this. They have mentioned in the past that they are concerned that our fund balances are not at the two-month level. I think showing them that we have increased them and have plans to increase them will go a long way in that conversation, but until we have that, I can't say for sure.
I think this discussion this evening is very important because if the council generally agrees with the plan that over the next three years, we're going to get to that 16.6%. That's information we would share next week with the rating agencies, and I think that they would take that as a very positive signal from the city council that the council is serious about maintaining appropriate balances.
Anything else? I'm going to turn the presentation over to Kate Lewis-Laken, our senior management analyst.
Great, welcome, Kate.
Thank you. Good evening again. My name is Kate Lewis-Laken, senior management analyst, and I will be going through the results of the Priority-Based Budgeting Survey. So, again, Ashley set up where our budget is, looking for 2019. That's a process going on in our office right now where we're working on projecting those numbers out. And as we do that, we're of course looking at this priority-based budgeting process that we've come to the council about over the past couple of months. The latest step of that, of course, being this online survey. So, the survey was available from May 10th through June 7th. It was available online. Paper copies were also available at community centers and at library branches in the city. We received 3,304 responses to the survey. 2,852 were online and another almost 500 came to us in paper. So, we were really happy with the numbers of participation in that survey. The full results and the summary are included in the city council packet, and they're also available on the city's website at the budget page. We had a number of open-ended questions on the survey and we printed out all of those and included those as an attachment, again, on the website. So, those can be seen by residents, by city council, as you are available to do that. We also conducted an employee survey, so it was the same questions, same text of the survey that just went separately to city employees. Those results are also online. I will not be presenting those tonight, so city council and the residents can view those when they are available. So, just going through the survey questions and some of the major findings that we've been able to get from it so far. So, the resident survey, the first question asked, please select the 10 programs that you believe to be the most important for the city to provide. And again, this was out of a list of 46 programs that we presented to you at the last meeting when we went over this survey. Number one on this list came out as the mental health board with 63% of residents who answered the survey choosing that in their top 10. Other top choices, youth and young adult services, summer food program, social services, mayor's summer youth employment. Again, as the city manager mentioned, a number of our social services ended up in this top 10. Moving on to the second question, please select the 10 programs that you believe the city should consider for reduction or elimination. Number one on this was Divvy Bikes, Fall Bear Vacation Rental Permits and Administration, storefront monetization program, our passport services in the revenue and collections office. Little bit less consensus on this question. You'll see the percentages are a bit lower than on the question about the top 10 programs. But again, gives us a good starting point in thinking about what services we provide and where the residents stand on those. These next three slides are, sorry.
Sorry, Alderman, Rainey had a question or comment?
Sorry to interrupt you, but I had a conversation with a member of our staff who told me an amazing bit of information, and that was, and I know we've had controversy about the Airbnb issue and licensing, but that we are making a really nice amount of money, revenue, from that licensing. And could somebody just mention a ballpark figure there?
Sure. So, we actually, I think two items kind of are grouped together in a lot of people's heads when we're thinking about this Airbnb. I'm wondering if the number you're requesting is for the Airbnb tax, which we issued starting last year? And that was actually not included in this analysis. This, the item that was included in the survey was for the licensing of these Airbnbs, for the staff time that it takes to, you know, notify people, put on the agenda, do kind of all of that legwork. The theory being that we could stop doing that process and continue collecting the tax from, you know, Airbnb or from BBRO or from those companies that collected on our behalf. So, we, we actually had a conversation about that and made, and made a specific decision to keep those two separate. So, that is the rationale for why licensing was seen with a cost rather than with a revenue. I don't...
Ashley, do you have the current year revenues thus far for the Airbnb?
I think Alex is furiously looking them up right now.
So, Alderman, Rainey?
But there's a cost benefit. I mean, so, there is, I mean, that's important for people to know.
Right, and we can tax with, without licensing. And so, I think that was...
But I mean, when they, when they say, let's get rid of it, did they know what they were talking about? Did they think that we were just, they were saying, let's just get rid of the oversight of Airbnbs and vacation rentals? Is that what people thought they were saying? I don't...
We tried in the company document to explain that, that the management of it is separate from the taxation, the taxes will come without us managing a licensing program.
Because we definitely want the revenue.
And so, I think prior to the conclusion, we'll get to that information if we can move forward.
Thank you. Sorry, I interrupted your train of thought.
That's okay. So, moving on to some of the open-ended questions that we asked. The first was, what are your top three priorities for the city? And again, this is an opportunity for residents to give us their priorities outside of the list that we gave them at the beginning. The three that really stand out there that you can see are safety, youth, and mental health. A number of others are highlighted. Again, these are word clouds that just try and capture those key words and phrases that came up a number of times. The larger words came up more often, and we'll continue to do analysis on the thousands of comments that came through on these to see what other information we can glean, but just high-level, some of the things that are popping up. And these do match up, you saw, with the, with the top 10 that came through. Where are areas where you would recommend the city look to find savings? Again, these lined up with some of the items that were also asked in that question. So, our Divvy Bikes, administrative costs, permits, committees, all coming up as some of, some of the top places for us to look for savings. And then finally, please share any additional ideas for the 2019 budget. This was open-ended question again for residents to give us anything else that they thought was important, and clearly we heard a lot about taxes. I believe this was largely, please do not raise property taxes. So, we will, again, continue to look at these. There were a number of sort of off-the-wall ideas in this section, too, that gave us some good things to look at, things to think about as we move forward with our budget process. We'll continue to work through those comments as this continues. We also collected demographic responses as survey questions at the end of the survey. So, not all residents and participants chose to answer these questions, but those who did, we got some good information about who was represented by the survey. 90% did tell us which ward they live in, so we did get a pretty good response on this. You can see all wards were represented, about twice as many from the sixth ward, the most participants is from the eighth ward, the least number of participants, but the span is there, so we did have participation from across the city on this survey. Looking at some other demographics, about 50% of the respondents identified themselves as female, about a quarter as male, about a quarter preferred not to answer that question. Age, we had 32% ages 31 to 50, 28% ages 51 to 70, smaller percentage over the age of 71, and only 5% under the age of 30. 26% again, preferred not to answer this question. And then looking at race, 50% of our respondents identified themselves as white or Caucasian, 8.5% is black or African-American, 1.8% is Hispanic Latino, 3.5% chose other options, and this is the least answered question, 36% chose not to answer this question. So, again, gives us a place to start in looking at who is represented and what other, who may need to be reached out to more in the future. And Kimberly Richardson is going to talk more about that in our next steps.
Thank you. Good evenings. Next steps. So, now that we have the results from the survey, where do we go from here? And we're going to first discuss those programs that are not social services programs. The budget team will do a further study in reviewing of the list that's shown here on this page under departments, as well as the continual list here. We will be reviewing all programs and services, their policies and possible revenue sources, and the staff will come back with additional information upcoming city council meeting in July. We're still in the process of figuring out how we're going to conduct the study, looking at data as well as reviewing requirements of these programs, are programs that are mandated in some form or fashion, and if they're not, then what policies are governing them and how can we look at all costs with regards to these programs. As to social services, I will be leading a comprehensive review of all of our social services programs, which include those top programs that were listed as priorities of the community. And I'll be having assistance from our human services working group and interdepartment committee comprised of all staff from majority of the city's departments. The objective of this review is not to focus on budget reductions, but service delivery and resource allocation, making sure we are meeting the needs of our community, of all populations. We will inventory all our services from every department. There were lists of services that were not even on the study. We will include those as well. We are looking at who the programs or services are being, who are being serviced by the programs, as well as who is not being serviced by our programs, and figuring out why is that a gap there. We're going to also look at, like I said, service delivery, identify duplications, and again, gaps. We're not just looking at gaps in regards to city, city gaps, but there might be external partners that are assisting us as well in looking at partnerships, as well as any type of external resources that we can utilize. And also, looking at silos. Are services happening where one is providing provider service and the other departments are not talking to each other? Or are we looking, you know, also looking at more collaborative? Or are we looking, you know, also looking at more collaborative, working together within our organization to better utilize, again, allocation of our resources? The goal is to return to city council in September with a completed report. We are in the process of doing the collective data now, so we're getting the inventory of services together. And we will be working through that through the rest of the summer into September. Now, what's important, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Kimberly. Alderman Fleming had a question or comment.
Thank you. So looking at the staff, the, the staff that comprises in this working group, can you tell me two things? One, I would like to see the fire department represented because they, particularly with our, they are, okay, they're on this little list. And then also, is this all levels of staff? Is this department heads? Is this management?
So the committee are comprised of staff at all levels. So we're talking about those individuals that are, who are actually in the department, who are at either a administrative level or above. So we will be talking to individuals at administrative, excuse me, our management analysts will be assisting me with the collection of the data. But we'll be working closely with each individual division that manages their programs to make sure that we're getting all the information that we need to be able to comprise of the, of the report. So it will be at all levels. It's just not top-down. It will be going top, way down, bottom-up in that regard.
Okay, thank you. Because that was a concern with the budget survey when we got the list of programs that some, you know, I was not necessarily the most comprehensive group of people. My other question, and I don't know if you can answer this, is where the two slides before where it listed different programs that we're going to study, can someone give more information about how those are going to be studied? I know you're doing a comprehensive equity analysis of social services, but I'm not sure what the further study of things like fleet services looks like.
Alderman Fleming, the members of the council, if you'd like, we can do a quick run-through of each of these right now, if you'd like.
I would like, or, or you can, you know, provide it in the memo. I would like, just because I, again, as the budget survey came out, I feel like for myself, it came out and then we went to public, I would like to have a little more information just about what this other survey looks like, or what this other study looks like.
So our plan is to come back on July 30th. I think at that meeting, we will be able to speak to each one of these. And we'll, we'll give you parameters at that point and give you an update as to where we stand.
And will you have started the study already on July 30th?
I'm sorry?
Will you already be in the midst of the study on July 30th? Or July 30th is coming, is coming back to talk about what the study is going to be doing?
I think we're going to start immediately looking at all of these. So I, I don't know that I would call study for the vast majority is probably more than what we'll be doing. I think we're going to be examining each of these and looking, you know, administrative adjudication. We're going to look at how we're currently managing that, look at how we're, we're tracking data, look at costs, expenses and revenues associated with that. So that would be something, I don't know that I would call it a study, but certainly we're going to do an examination. So if the council would like us to do an off-agenda item that kind of explains that for each of those, fire suppression, all the fire department issues, we'll be a little bit more extensive. We plan to come to administration, public works next week actually as a discussion item to talk more about the fire department issues. So we could do a document, Ashley...
Thank you.
With, which will have a summary of all that. And then we'll be back on July 30th.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Alderman Braithwaite had a question.
Just a short question. I'd love to see a list of who is on the committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Do you have anything else, Kimberly?
Not to this, other than that, again, we will be putting the equity lens to this process, and I will have Dr. Pat Effion come to explain more about that process.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. So one of the big things that came out of the study, looking, standing back and looking from an equity perspective, was that there were some real challenges here. And one of them is the demographics. If you note, 60, 50% of our respondents were white, while 60%, according to the census, the 2010 census data, 65% of our residents are white. 18% of our residents are black. Respondents was 8%, just over 8% black. And with the Latinos, same thing, almost 9% according to the census, Latino or Hispanic, the respondents were 1.8%. You also notice that the, so, so number one, we're still not getting adequate response from our most vulnerable communities. The second part of that is that the real issue becomes, how do we do that? Because if you're looking at those top 10 programs, generally, the most impacted groups are those from our most vulnerable, the black and Hispanic communities. So while we accept, we can understand that this is the survey that we put out there and these are the results, we have to stand back and do the greater equity work of looking at, number one, how do we engage these residents? So part of the next steps will be, we will be intentional about going out and, and increasing those percentages of the survey results. So again, that we're hearing from those communities. That's going to require us to do a community engagement, which means identifying where these populations can be found, identifying a specific number that we want to reach, and going out and reaching them in their community. It talks the bigger issue of institutional mistrust that exists. And so how do we engage the community and not just, you know, they're, they're not going to go online and do a survey. We were very intentional about engaging particularly with African-Americans in the fifth ward and were somewhat surprised that, that the numbers that came back from the fifth ward and from the African-American community are fairly consistent with the, the voter registration and voter turnout data from the past three years. So that's one of the big questions. The second thing is, when we're looking at this process, we will be applying what is called an equity lens. It's in your packet. And it specifically will ask the questions, the goal or purposes of the program, what community needs or barriers are addressed by this program, what are the targeted populations of this program? Will there be impacts on racial equity, workforce equity? Right now, the city is in a mode where we're working for equality, and we're trying to shift that to where we're working for equity. And, and let me just give you a brief difference. When we're talking about equity, we're talking about the work of identifying the most critically affected community at this time. I will give you the example of a car accident. There are four people in a car, the car crashes, those emergency first responders arrive on the scene, and they have to assess, who do they treat first? It's triage. That's the work of equity. When we continue the work for equality, we keep trying to balance it for everybody, and so we never get any results that result in, in greater participation from these most vulnerable groups. I think tonight you have a really good example. We have the Harley Clark mansion, which is a huge issue and critical for this community. And then you also have youth and young adult, which a number of people have spoken on. How do we deal with that from an equity perspective? So, so we will be applying this equity lens so that when the report does come back, what you'll also see is, in addition to all those programs, what percentage across all of these programs, what percentage of African-Americans, Latinx are impacted by all of these considerations?
Pat, Alderman Rainey had a question or comment?
Yes.
Pat, you say that minorities were not included, perhaps we didn't reach out enough. However, when it comes to race, it says 50% of the respondents were white, that 8.5% identified as black, African-American.
Yes.
1.8 Hispanic, Latino, 3.5 other, but 36.2 preferred not to answer.
Correct.
We don't know what the 36.2 were.
That's absolutely right.
How do you, how, I, I'm sitting here thinking, when we first looked at this, I wonder what Pat would say about that. Why, what, what is that about? I mean, I might not want to tell my age or my sex, but what was that about?
So...
That's got to be explained.
Well...
They could all be black, African-American.
Absolutely.
Or white, or who knows?
That's right.
So why, why is that not more significant than any of the other percentages there?
Good, very good question. Thank you for asking that. So one of the things, we have to discount that number because those are people who simply choose not to identify. There is simply no way for us to get at who this population is. I will tell you that it's less likely, this is best practices, it's less likely that people of color, people with disabilities, it's less likely that they would put themselves, less likely statistically, that they would put themselves in and, and not respond to that question. However, we just can't consider that because we don't know. We have to operate, from the equity standpoint, we have to operate with the information that we do have. And if you look back again at voter registration and voter turnout, we, we appear to be collecting, to be getting that same percentage. Our goal is to, is to reach the percentage, the, the population that chooses to identify. And then the other important part of that, Alderman Rainey, is that when we spoke with groups in the African-American community, specifically African-American community, there was, there was incredible institutional mistrust that, that was discussed. So I'll give you an example, is when we went to the community, they said, yeah, but our people aren't going to go, they, they don't have access to the computers, they're not, they're just not going to go to the computers. So then we offered the paper survey and they said, yeah, that's fine, same group, same time, that's fine, but who's going to be entering that data? How do we know we're going to really get represented? And so the institutional trust and the anecdotal information is very important here. It's who are we dealing with and how do we reach those who choose to ident, to self-identify?
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and thank you, Dr. Effion. I just want to address Alderman Rainey's question because I do agree with you, there was a tremendous effort put within the community to get that response from people of color, particularly within the black community. Alderman Rainey, I know that, you know, many of the black churches took the time to pass out the surveys within our congregations as well. There was a significant effort as well, working with our senior community. So I, although I cannot guarantee, I will agree with the statement that those that are black who received that survey did identify themselves throughout the process.
But if I could just respond, they had to be on the, they, they identified as 36.2, 36.2 did the survey. We're not talking about people who didn't do the survey. We're talking about...
Right.
36.2% of people who did the survey wouldn't say what their race was.
Fair enough.
I'm not talking about people who didn't do the survey.
Oh, no, no. I, I mean, it's, it's, it's an X. I mean, we, it's just unknown.
But, but my question is, I, I would love to talk to somebody...
Right.
Who said, I'm not telling.
Not it.
Right. Clerk Reed, is there any similarity, differences between some voter registration stuff in your office and this data?
I just had a question for, for you, and it's kind of like a, what comes first, the chicken or the egg?
Yeah.
Do you think getting folks registered to vote and increasing voter participation will lead to more folks? Or do you think we have to get folks kind of participating in other realms first, in your opinion?
It's a both and. The more that we can build this institutional trust, the more that we can get out and go into their communities and speak with them directly, and for them to be able to see that their voice is heard, will begin to build that trust. But I, but I think at the same time, absolutely, because while we're out there, we need to do the work of educating them about the importance of being represented. So without this representation, I'm just, I'm just very concerned that while we do have to move forward in what we're doing, at the same time, we, we, we can't just keep moving forward and go, well, we'll, we'll catch them as they go. We have to move forward and, and be able to reach back and pull them along. So it's, it's a both and.
Thank you, thank you, Pat. All right. Any, anything else you want to take us through on the equity lens? Okay. No, thank you, thank you very much.
Good evening again, council.
Yeah, let's go, actually, there was one additional slide. I think Pat covered most of that. We really want to be thoughtful between now and the fall to look at exactly what Pat was describing, and that is, what can we do to reach out to the community, to try to continue to engage people even if there is not a survey to be filled out? So we're going to continue to do that. And we'll come back to you in, in July as part of the, the next updates and let you know about the work that we have done. So the final piece of this, and maybe Kate, if you could, Kate, if you could come back up for the, the final piece of this, we want to do additional community engagement again through August and September. But when the budget comes out in October, we really feel it's important to once again engage the community with the proposed budget. Ms. Louise Lakin has been helping us look at software packages. I know Alderman Fleming, you identified one. And Kate, what are, what's the, the one that we're looking at right now?
Balancing Act is one that's out.
Balancing Act. So there are these software packages that will let communities take the proposed budget and then they can be their own city council, so to speak, and, and mix and match. So we're, we're looking at, I think we're focusing on the one at this point. And our, tends to come back in, in July with more information. But as part of a community outreach in September, in October, excuse me, in October, once the budget is actually released, we would have individuals go through that. So I think if we settle on this one software package, we'll probably give a little bit of a preview, perhaps in July, before we contract the, the dollars associated with this is relatively modest. So I think we're going to go ahead and do that. So that'll be then a, another opportunity for members of the public to give opinions on the budget will be with the actual proposed budget in October. Did I miss anything? Okay.
That's something that came up quite a bit in the comments on the survey, was wanting to see that bigger picture, see all the dollars connected to the whole budget. So we think that'll be a, a good opportunity and a good time to do that.
Great. So we'll, we'll come back. We're looking, I think, at a package as soon as this week, I think.
Absolutely.
And we'll come back in July with more information. So I think that takes us to Alex Thorpe, our revenue manager, to talk about some of the revenue ideas that came up, not only through the survey, but also what staff's been working on. Alex?
Correct. The first on this list would be the real estate transfer stamp, to move that to $7 per thousand of the selling price. Currently, the city charges $5 per thousand. We do have a comparable chart in the memo that shows us similar to surrounding communities. And this is the only one on the list that I want to call out that needs a little bit more special attention. The council, in order to enact this increase, would need to do a resolution to get down a ballot. And it would have to pass majority vote. And I believe when I talked to law, the resolution, in order to have it for the 2019 budget would be in August.
August for the November election.
Correct. The second, everything else here is by council decision via ordinance. The next item on the list would be the home roll sales tax to increase it a quarter percent. Again, there's a comparative chart in the memo that shows where we stand relative to a lot of the surrounding communities. We anticipate that as a conservative estimate of 1.5 million in additional revenue. The third item on the list would be eliminate the first hour free at city garages. This number was derived from a report from SP Plus of the amount of people that took advantage of it for all of 2017. Majority came from the Maple and Sherman garage, about 85,000 people per garage for 2017. The fourth item would be a food and beverage tax. Again, this one's a little bit harder to kind of gauge, but we took surrounding communities, and there's kind of plenty of them, Mount Prospect, Skokie, Niles, Donner's Grove, Park Ridge, Lincolnwood, that all charge a 1% or more. I think Skokie was the highest at 2. So we kind of just took what they were generating in revenue and kind of applied. Again, ours is, this one's kind of a harder one to really gauge what's, once it's enacted, so.
Wolf, just so everybody's clear, this is on prepared food?
Right.
This food and beverage?
Yep, not on groceries, yes. We prepared food where it's served and consumed on premise. The next one would be the parking or the transportation network tax. Right now, it's at 20 cents per ride originating or ending in the city. And I think based on the first quarter of returns, this again, I think Ashley mentioned it, it was a lot stronger than we anticipated. But we do want to look at quarter two and quarter three because we don't really know how seasonal this really is. First quarter, pretty cold, you see a lot more people maybe utilize the ride services as it gets warmer. We want to kind of gauge those numbers before we really kind of ramp up. But based on what we've seen, we anticipate pretty conservatively that 300,000, if this was doubled, we would receive a new revenue. The next one would be to increase the wheel tax to $95. Currently, it's at $75. And I tried finding the last time we increased it, and I think it was more than 10 years ago. So based on actuals and kind of the numbers that are coming in, we anticipate, again, pretty, all these numbers are pretty solid numbers to bank on, I would say. So 500,000 is kind of with a $20, a $20 increase.
Hey, Wolf, Alderman Rainey has a question or comment?
Could we take, I totally oppose a flat real estate transfer tax increase... Could we take, I totally oppose a flat real estate transfer tax increase. However, I would be interested in looking at a real estate transfer stamp increase for properties that sell for, at a million five and over.
We did internally, I talked to legal about this.
I don't know if that's legal. Is that legal?
Legal did not give a high opinion on that, based on, it could be discriminatory.
But we don't care about that.
So we looked at it, we couldn't find any Illinois communities that had it, and so, yeah, legal would, it would still look into this if you wish, but for kind of the way it was proposed, the way we researched it, there was.
How about just at a million? I just, I just think that we're doing really well with real estate in our town. It's always been one of our main sources of income, and I just would hate to add to it. But I don't think it's painful at a greater rate, but, yeah, I'm not going to support that.
Thank you.
And the idea, and the idea of adding to the home roll sales tax, that is, that's regressive, and I don't support that. And food and beverage tax, I couldn't support that if it was on those places that also have alcohol, because they're already, they're already generating huge revenues for us. So, you know.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Could you tell me, the food and beverage tax, you went over that really quickly. You said something about food and beverages consumed off-site.
On-site.
On-site, okay.
Mostly restaurants.
Okay, so restaurants, Whole Foods, if you're eating in Whole Foods?
I was trying to research that one.
Carrying out Whole Foods, what, how do you?
I think they do. I couldn't find the specific ordinance that had like that carryout mentality from like a buffet style.
Prepared.
But I think I'm leaning towards it would be. I would have to kind of contact those other communities and see if they're remitting it on those stores.
Because most of the grocery stores now have sections where they prepare a meal for you. You just pick it up and carry it out. So I guess I just need some clarification on that. I'm okay with eliminating the first hour free at the city garages, because we do that at parking meters, you don't get a first hour free. Not, I guess I just really need more information about the hotel tax increase. I mean, I have a number of hotels in my ward, I'd want to make sure we're talking to them. And I'm sure I've got other questions, but I'll shoot you any mail, let you know.
I guess that was really it for the slide, if there was any questions. So the second slide, I kind of were collaborative ideas in the group, and so there really weren't estimates on there, just given some of these were, you know, we needed a little bit more time to research, but I think we kind of put this on here to get council direction for consideration, if you want to move forward on any of these. I guess I won't read them bullet for bullet, but kind of the first couple would be install parking meters along the lakefront and surface lots. So there's a couple of lots, Lighthouse Beach, Dawes Park, and near Dempster Beach, that don't have, kind of pay for spot that we'd look to do. The second was brought up, I believe, at last meeting by Alderman Fleming for doing the red light cameras. And the third one would be increase the parking deck fees on the hourly rates and put in automatic escalation. So this was something we looked at before, that was implemented prior to 2008, that kind of, I think, post-recession fell off, so. And the rest are pretty straightforward, increase Sherman Avenue garage monthly permits, increase the parking meter hourly. The council just recently standardized all of these, so this would be across the board for all the meters. Increase the parking lot fees. Explore opportunities to sell the Maple parking garage. Elimination of the free parking meters on Sunday at the garages as well, and then the boat launch and athletic decks.
Great. So we've got lots of, lots of folks that have questions or comments on this. We'll start with you, Alderman Rainey, and then we'll go to Alderman Braithwaite.
I think we ought to eliminate any further discussion of red light cameras. They're the worst public relation tool in the whole world.
I would, I would, well.
I'm going to defend what I said, first of all, because what I said was, there's a red light camera, and it's for when you turn right, because I live in Oakton, you're going to McCormick, you make a right-hand turn.
Skokie.
I understand it's Skokie, but it wasn't like a red light camera, like we have the horrible ones in Chicago. It's just when you make the right-hand turn. So all I was saying was, for example, I didn't say, "Let's go for it with the red light cameras." I said, "For example, I have gotten several tickets there in Skokie, I'm sure makes a ton of money." And I, my other point was that just because Chicago did it poorly, which they did, doesn't mean if we did it, it would be that poor. So just because I know some of our bloggers here will have me down in the paper tomorrow is moving forward with a red light camera, so let me clarify.
All right. That's worth jumping ahead there, Alderman Fleming. All right. Alderman Braithwaite?
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think just based on your comments, Alderman Fleming, I think it's important for the public to understand that, again, these are all conceptual ideas and that they do require more information. I would just, as a, just, I would agree with Alderman Rainey, and I think we should just completely remove the red light cameras. It's one of those things that, it's very, very, very difficult for the public to defend, and just from a historical perspective, I mean, our council has not been in support of that. So I don't know if you need something formal right now.
Consider it removed.
Thank you. Okay. And so then the other item is the Maple Street parking garage, it's in the second ward. Again, this is all very preliminary, but I know that there are a number of different entities that have contracts with that garage, so I would be very curious to know how a sale would impact those current contracts with the various groups that rely on parking there.
I would just also add on the, explore the potential sale of Maple Avenue parking garage. In the sale of any, any asset, whether it's the library parking lot or the parking garage, it's not an ongoing, you know, revenue source like these others are. That really is focused on, you know, reducing debt that we have elsewhere, applying it to other, you know, projects that benefit the larger community, if there would ever be a sale of an asset.
But I would all, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Please. And so I wanted to make sure that we understand what that upfront capital pop would be, as well as a calculation of what the, what the tax revenue would look like, because I'm assuming it would go back on the tax roll.
The, oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that would be a pretty extensive analysis there, absolutely. Alderman Fisk, and then we'll go to Alderman Wilson.
Okay, well, so I'm in the club of getting tickets at, at the red light camera, so we're all, we're all in that club.
It's gone.
So my, my question, I used to be on Parking and Transportation Committee, I'm not this year, but I'm a little bit concerned about parking meters along the lakefront and surface lots. The lakefront parking lots are not really 12-month used in wintertime. You'll see a few people there at lunchtime or on a sunny day, but I want to weigh that against the cost of our parking meters, because I know our new parking meters are expensive. So when you give us the report, can you balance that out for us? And I'm not sure I've heard about the sale of the Maple Avenue parking garage or the potential, so I'd like to see a memo on that as well. And can we, I would love to see an increase in the number of boat racks, because I do think that that's, that's a way we can make a little bit of money. But we have to do dredging if we're going to do that.
All right. Alderman Wilson?
I think collectively, that just about covered all my points. I agree with Alderman Fisk on the, if increasing the boat racks and the paddleboard spaces is an option, I understand that the lake level has made that less of an option lately, but I know that there are waiting lists. I've heard quite a few times from residents who can't get off the waiting list and get their, their equipment out there. I also don't want to, I don't want to sell any revenue-generating assets for a one-time sale. We've seen Chicago has pursued that with a great deal of not success, so I don't want to find ourselves in a situation like with, then with the bridges, then with the parking meters, where the residents end up paying an extraordinary amount, we lose the revenue opportunity and for a one-time revenue, so if we could just be mindful of that.
If there are no further.
We got Alderman, what has a question?
So I think some of my, my points have already been made. I do think that number three, increasing the hourly parking deck fees and putting, and putting an index on it with automatic escalation, that was something that was discussed and actually may even have been approved by the council or discussed in detail. And then we had the recession, and those fees stayed the same, and the cost of running those decks doesn't stay the same. So I do think that's an important thing to do, to have that in there, so we don't have to keep coming, come back and then have too large an increase for people. So that should be something that's factored in. I agree with that. I don't know that I would necessarily agree with increasing the parking meter hourly fee. I still hear about the increase that we did throughout the city, you know, that beyond the core. I agree with Alderman Wilson completely on the sale of a city asset. It isn't just Chicago that's made that mistake, it's other states as well and other municipalities. I would really want to think very, very seriously about that. And, you know, I agree with Alderman Fisk on studying the issue of the meters along the lakefront. I think, I know in the past, the concern might have been that we end up with people who, who might work in the downtown, who then use those meters, and it's going to be, you'd have to figure out how you enforce it. So everything else, I'm very interested in hearing about.
I would just, I would just like to add, when it comes to, you know, if this city's going to sell or consider and explore the idea of selling an asset, to me, you know, there has to be obviously a very, very thorough analysis, but I don't think we should certainly take it off, off the table if this council votes to increase the debt limit of the city from 113 million to 150 million, which city staff is going to come forward with. And remember, for each million dollars of debt that the city takes on, I think it's about $70,000 in debt service that we then have. So I think that's why that, that idea has been thrown about. It's not to strike a bad deal or anything like that, but it's, we've got to be smart and responsible with all of our, all of our finances here. So taking a look at our assets is just one tool in the toolbox. Sorry, Wolf.
And it was, and so I'll turn it back over to Ashley to round out for the 2019 budget calendar.
Great. Thank you. So the last thing we have that's included in your packet is just the 2019 budget calendar, which looks kind of in a similar idea as previous years, with the idea of getting the proposed budget out the first Friday in October. So the next thing we have listed is to come back, as has been previously mentioned throughout this presentation, on July 30th, with some of the answers to your questions as well as kind of just a mid-year 2018 update, where we'll maybe have, have better estimates for 2019 also. In September, we will continue with the outreach that Kimberly and Pat discussed, face-to-face outreach and engagement. September 17th is the meeting listed for the Human Services Program Review Presentation. And then again, as I mentioned, Friday, October 5th, when we have a proposed budget, and then we would go through kind of the outreach and engagement process from there, with a number of city council meetings, public hearings, and opportunities to hear from the public about that proposed budget and next steps, with an estimated adoption date of Monday, November 19th. And with that, I open it up to any questions or comments.
City manager?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for letting us walk through this. I think we learned a lot through this first phase. I think we have a long list of issues before us. Let me just end by, you know, really reinforcing why we're doing this. We're doing this because Evanston is a special place. We're doing this because we want to continue to offer the quality services that we do. We want to continue to invest in the facilities that we have, and we want to be responsible for our debt and for making sure that the service of our employees, once they retire, that those obligations are fully funded. It's a tall order. I think you see we've got a lot of moving parts now to work on. It's our intent that we come back to you with a, with a budget plan in October that will last us a while. This is a long process. This is, you know, our employees are watching this very carefully, they work hard every day, and of course, are concerned about what this means for their future, their family's future. So it's not something we do lightly, nor is it something we want to do often. But our hope is, is that we can give you a menu of decisions through the proposed budget this year, and with an adopted budget, have that, hopefully have us in good stead for many years to come. So again, thank you, Ashley and your team, for excellent presentation. And, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any other questions, that could.
I got, I got one more light on, it was Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just thank you to the staff for the presentation. I'm looking forward to the additional information that will come out of the discussion tonight. And I realize, and I say this to the members of the councils, that we will have some very difficult decisions to make moving, moving forward, as well as when it comes time to finalize the budget. I have been vocal about this over the last two or three meetings, and I've shared that just based on the public comments that we've heard, as well as the residents in my ward and members of the black community citywide, that there are two very important programs, and not to diminish the other programs that have been put on the list, but as we enter into the summer, and when we think about our most vulnerable youth, the two programs that I do want to call out is Youth and Young Adult Program, that we've received feedback citywide to the city manager and members of the council, as well as the Mayor Summer Youth Employment Program. And I would like to make a motion to remove those two programs from the list, and not to say I trust that the director, as well as the manager of that program, will continue to look at ways to run those programs more efficiently, but just based, again, on the feedback that I've received, as well as the public comments over the years, I would like to make a motion to please remove those from the list as a way of signaling to our town and our communities that we have heard their, their support for the program, and that's my motion, to remove those two.
Any conversation? Alderman Wilson?
I do want to point out that part of the point of the process, at least in my mind, was to get conversations going on in the community about what we are, what the services that we're providing. And, you know, I've kind of described it as if I sat down in a busy coffee shop and, you know, passed out a list to the people in the coffee shop and said, "Okay, which things on this list do we do?" I'm sure that not everyone in that room would know about these programs. So I think it's been very, very useful, and unfortunately, there's been a lot of anxiety that's gone with it. So the intention wasn't to create a cut list. I've heard it referred to as a cut list. Nobody ever, you know, on this dais or here, called this a cut list. So I think to the extent that it has brought a lot of conversation forward, it's provided the community with a lot of information on what these programs do, because for the most part, if you're not involved or engaged in the program, you probably don't have much of an idea at all about the impact or what's being done. So I think it's been very important and very, and very useful in that regard. You know, so, you know, if you're, you know, kind of hanging out at the barbecue or whatever, you know, making fun of us and talking about how stupid we are, you know, I think that really the better question is, you know, think about the fact that you're having the conversation, because that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to provoke those conversations in the community, and we're trying to get feedback from you. So that's what we're trying to accomplish. And so I just want people to be mindful of that. So, you know, I've consistently been supportive of these programs, I've talked to the staff who are involved in working with them, so I don't have any issue with that. But I did just want to stress that this is part of a community process to get more input upfront, not in October, when everybody's freaking out and panicking. We want to do this with a measured and thoughtful process that engages the community, and I think that that's part of what we're doing. So thank you to your team, thank you for all you've been doing, and thank you to everybody who took the time to talk about it, discuss it, and to do the surveys. It's been useful.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Alderman Wilson, but we do have a motion on the floor, and I'm going to support that motion, because I think it's important. I've talked with the city manager and a lot of my colleagues about, there's no easy way to do a survey like this without it being perceived by some people as a popularity contest, and I think that's created a lot of anxiety in the community. And, and I think it's incumbent upon us and our staff to explain that that was not either our intention, nor is that going to be the determinative factor in how we make decisions on the budget. So we need to do that very carefully, but I do think that there's been enough concern expressed in the community that Alderman Braithwaite's motion is in order.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Rainey?
I agree with both of you.
I agree with both of you, however, and also you, Alderman Braithwaite. But in the past, keep in mind, no matter how much criticism there was about the popularity contest or whatever you want to call, non-scientific list of programs for and against, in the past, we have had budget meetings, budget hearings where nobody showed up. We've had the city manager sitting with a TV camera and a microphone. Nobody came. This time, we got 3,000 people responding. So that was participation that we've never had before. And I think that's the beginning of something really very special. And I'm sure we've learned how to do it better this time. And it's only the beginning. I mean, it's only June, so.
Alderman Braithwaite.
And we need to emphasize that. That's my point.
Right. And I think I did preface my statement with there are, I mean, a ton of other things that are on this list that I'm concerned about. I mean, I could go down.
We're just checking one on.
We're just scratching the surface, excuse me, the surface. But again, going into the summer, I mean, there's a lot of fear and anxiety. And for this group of folks who, I mean, I don't think I need to talk about the merits of the program because then we start to get into something else. But I think because of the work that they do and also the timing, I just think it's something that's important to do as a representative of, of the community of people who I hear from. So that's why I'm bringing it forward.
There are other constituencies who feel that, you know, potholes are really important and they need to come out and tell us that.
I know that you're not comparing potholes to this.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not.
I think I'll just ask the call.
But I'm speaking to those people. Talk to us. Talk to us.
That's what.
And the theater people, they're talking to us, Fleetwood Jordan Theater. I told them today, I'm, I'm going to make that motion very soon.
And to Alderman Rainey and members of the council, if I felt that this motion would in somehow take away from the larger conversations, I wouldn't make it. I don't think that it does.
No, I think it's.
I don't think that the engagement is going to wean it all. I think folks are still going to continue to show up to meetings and participate in the budget. But I do feel very strongly about this, so.
All right. So we have, we have a motion that was, that was seconded to, to retain the Youth and Young Adult Vision in the Mayor's Summer Youth Employment Program. It was seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. So seeing, seeing no, nothing further than city manager, you got what you need on, on item, item number two on the agenda. We're going to move to item number three now, which is Resolution 43-R-18, which is authorizing the city manager to meet with Evanston Lighthouse Dunes Organization, negotiate on the costs associated with the restoration of the dunes and the gardens and demolition of the Harley Clark Mansion and Coach House. City manager, do you want to just preface this and then we can go to Alderman Rainey if she wants to speak first?
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on page 116 is where the, the item begins per Alderman Rainey's reference. You have the resolution before you, 43-R-18. I think it's self-explanatory, certainly we're here to answer any questions. The council also asked some additional questions through this process and let me just highlight those on page 117, questions regarding the Preservation Commission's role here, and that is outlined on page 117 onto 118. Alderman Sufferton asked the questions regarding process for referendum submitted to voters either done by this body or through a voter initiative. So that information's on page 118. The legislative history, the recent legislative history ends on 119. And then we have the attachments. First is the resolution. Then on page 123 is a current demolition, deconstruction, and site restoration estimate that Gary Gertis, our building and inspections division manager, worked on with various local vendors. So that information is contained starting on page 123. It continues, it's summarized through 125. And then for several pages are the actual documents received from the vendors themselves. There was also a request for the summary document that was provided by Tawani Enterprises in November of 2013 that included the work that they did. That goes on for multiple pages as well. And then a standalone letter from another interested party back from November 2012. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we are here to answer any specific questions you have. The assistant city manager is here and has taken the lead on most of the staff work. Ms. Mason Cup, the city attorney is here. She's also prepared to speak. The community development director, Ms. Leonard, is Mr. Gertis here with us this evening? So she'll be available to you to answer any questions regarding the demolition restoration costs.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you, city manager. So why don't we, why don't we focus the conversation initially on questions that, that people have in regards to any of the materials, if there are, if there are any? Alderman Rainey?
It was my understanding that we were going to request that the Lighthouse Dunes people make a presentation. Is that fact?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah. If they, if they would like to, I'll certainly grant that. And we've done that with other proposals and ideas for the, for the Harley Clark. Was there anybody from that group that wanted to, to, you can? Then I'm going to, then I'm going to ask if you don't mind answering any questions that council members may have after.
Absolutely.
Can you keep this to 10 minutes or less? Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm Nicole Kustak. I would like to take a minute to say how important it has been for our group to abide by the process established by the city and to be patient. As many of you know, we've been at this for more than a year and we have often thought we would never get a chance to present in a forum like this. So thank you. As a brief history, our group was excluded from the RFP last fall as our vision focuses on expanding green space and natural habitat, not building rehabilitation. We feel that restoring and maintaining a 20,000-square-foot home is not fiscally viable or conducive to environmental programming. However, we understood the need for the democratic process. Only after a seven-to-two vote and two subsequent council meetings where these negotiations were not reinstated, did we feel comfortable coming forward to the city for your consideration. We understood the pursuit of natural parkland to be the next step and we wanted to offload this financial burden ahead of what we know to be a difficult year of budget cuts. When the land was acquired in 1965, it was said to be expanded, it was said to be to expand the park and dunes. Since then, we have had almost 60 years of deferred maintenance and disrepair, and no notable funding has been established to cover a multimillion-dollar renovation or costly annual maintenance. We are hopeful, the city feels now is the time to expand the parkland, reduce invasives in the dunes, and develop more natural habitats. Our group understands that it's not an easy decision and that our opinion is not shared by all. And we don't want to take away from the fact that the house is fondly regarded by many. We do believe though, that there's a way forward here and that the other side can be something good for the whole community. A place of recreation, a place of education, a place of sustainability, and one that stays public forever. There are chances for development around every bend, but this is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to return something to its original state and to leave freely accessible natural land for the future of Evanston. Our group has more than 50 donations from all wards in our city. We will offset the entire cost of taking down both structures, the regrading of the site, the cost to landscape the park and remove the invasive trees and species from the dunes. Core elements of the Jensen Gardens remain. The city obtained three quotes, of which we received late Friday evening. The middle bid from Taylor Construction is very thorough. They had access to the interior of both buildings and including separate landscaping and procurement costs, that final project spend is $450,000. I'm excited to say we've raised over $300,000 in three weeks with multiple contributions coming in just today. We're confident and committed to funding the entire project before the city moves forward. We've also allocated $5,000 that we would like to contribute towards environmental programming scholarships at the existing renovated foghouses. The final piece of our vision goes out to everyone who has ever circled the lighthouse lot looking for a space to park. Maybe some of you did that this weekend. We have a rendering showing it's possible to add an additional 20% increase in parking while still removing the blacktop driveways and reducing the natural pavement at the site. Our plan is 100% compliant with the lakefront master plan. Specifically, our concept is free for all users, all the time. Nothing here costs the citizen, the citizens money and there are no private events that close the space to the public. It preserves the lakefront's natural environment, draws the community towards a new native habitat made more accessible with added parking spaces, supports outdoor environmental programming, and emphasizes both planned programming and unplanned activity. You don't need a 20,000-square-foot house to get kids outside. I want to close in saying that for me, this has been a difficult couple of weeks. I got involved in this because I too wanted to save this house. When I started to dig deeper, I didn't see a comparable financial model in the entire country that we could follow to renovate and operate the space. Believe me, I looked. That said, I stayed involved in this precisely because I do live nearby. Contrary to what has been said publicly about my family, our view does not change or improve in the slightest. I did this for my kids, but I also did this for your kids and anyone who should ever come to Lighthouse Park and Beach. I believe change is hard, but I also believe it can be for the greater good. And time and time again, that's what we're hearing when donors reach out to us. There's no personal gain here. There are no backroom dealings or trying to quickly force something through. This process has been five years of neighbors against neighbors and ongoing negotiations that have resulted in nothing. The people that have come forth with their own money for this vision may feel differently than some people here tonight, but I can assure you that they came from a place of good. And should the city choose this path forward, they would want to provide a real, workable solution. We want to do the one thing that we believe keeps this land all of ours forever.
I would just, I would just, yeah, I would just ask people to refrain from clapping or booing or anything like that. There are obviously two passionate perspectives on, on this issue. Mr. Conley?
Thank you. My name's Jeff Conley. I am a seventh ward resident, city council members, mayor, others. Here, I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to provide more details about the Lighthouse Dunes project that we've been working on for the last year. Early on in my career, I spent two years working on the budget for the city of Chicago in the budget office. That experience gave me an in-depth appreciation for the difficult resource allocation decisions constantly in front of you. Your job is very hard. Thank you again for your public service. Respect for the difficulty of this particular resource allocation decision is one of the two reasons I've spent so much time working on this initiative. The second is that I believe this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for this precious prop, to restore this precious property. Regarding scarce resources, the city's already spent considerable time beginning to plan for the 2019 budget. We just went through a very sobering discussion. You guys got a lot of, there's a lot of work there. In 2014, city staff estimated the cost of required improvements to the Harley Clark Mansion to be 7.5 million. That was four years ago. That number's now most likely higher. The city does not have the capacity, which means funds would have to come from philanthropy. There's a limit to the philanthropic bandwidth in this town. Current philanthropic projects underway include Robert Crown, Foster Avenue School, and many local nonprofits such as, including YMCA, Family Focus, Youth Job Center, and many more. All these agencies do great work and need continued financial support from Evanston residents. Thus, we believe philanthropic effort to raise such, the necessary funds of seven and a half million or more will not be successful. If the property's left mothballed, the city has daily liability exposure. A related point to resource allocation has to do with ongoing costs. The existing wooded areas have not been maintained properly for years. The packet contains a quotation from Nels Johnson. It states, clearing the area, the dunes and the beach, and trimming the remaining trees is good, is a good management strategy for this property, for this park. Such removal will reduce ongoing costs and allow the beach, lake, and lighthouse to be accentuated, which leads to my second point. I believe this to be a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. This parcel is precious. It is our lakefront. It should be here for all to enjoy forever at no cost with no further development. The lighthouse is on the logos of both the city and District 65. There's a mural in the Hill Center at District 65. This property has the opportunity to become the signature point of Evanston, open to all residents all the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Noreen Edwards. I have lived for 38 years in the first ward. My husband Mark and I raised three children there and Lighthouse Beach is our beach. My daughter lives now in the second ward and took her lovely babies to Lighthouse Beach for the first time last week. I serve on the Evanston Environment Board. I'm also a landscape designer and contractor. I've been planting trees and designing and installing gardens for over 16 years. Regarding design of Lighthouse Park, the Dunes Group recommends a community design process, ideally coordinating the design of the entire 10-acre park, though of course the different parcels are owned by different government bodies. So that might be a little complicated. We would like to see natural areas built and restored, clearing invasives from all areas, adding paths, trees, and woodland gardens, and restoring dunes where damaged. There are many examples of community-designed parks everywhere, including in Womet and further north, and many examples of public parks that have received grant funding for design and implementation. Many of us on this committee would help with grant writing and with the design of the park. I read the old report prepared by Johnson, Johnson, and Roy, architects and planners who specialize in historic gardens. This was written quite a while ago, but pretty much everything is still the same. I quote them liberally here. This is, this report is considered the Jensen Bible of Lighthouse Park. They recommend retain some Jensen plantings, a remnant of his palette, but do not try to restore entirely. Many plants he specified are no longer appropriate to plant, such as American elm. The original garden included a tennis court about where the restroom building is, and the current parking lot was the north lawn of the mansion. The front lawn was surrounded by trees which blocked the views of the lighthouse from the north. So, but much of what the Clark estate gave it a sense of quiet dignity can no longer be seen today except in photographs, since many of the plantings and lawns have died or replaced by the parking areas and sidewalks. So restoration should also reflect the fact of the changed use of the buildings and the parks. What was suitable for residents may not be suitable for public park. Materials, including plants, which require repeated maintenance, should not be specified. Durability, simplicity of maintenance are to be sought. In the design process, we should consider the use of Jensen's principles of soft edgings, natural plantings, prairie, or meadow clustering. We could design a garden room to embrace the grotto area and plantings and paths to enhance the look and view and function of the council ring. A new natural area opening the, the whole 10-acre park to all would add to one of the best parks in Evanston and would be welcomed by humans and birds alike. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Noreen. All right. Dick, you're the last one to speak?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And I will be brief. Good evening, everyone. I'm Dick Beach. I think both of you know me. Mike, I'd like to talk about the environmental side of things here at the mansion. It's been brought up a lot about the importance of this environmental education piece they want to put in there. Quite frankly, we have a really superb environmental situation going on there already. The Evanston Ecology Center produces programs there at the two foghouses to the tune of almost 700 kids every summer in four different sessions of camps. It produces family circles, family campfires, family, everything else. Over the course of a year, and I mean all year because they do snow shelling in the winter up there, they service about 2,000 to 3,000 residents every single year there. I don't know how much more you could possibly do in a park area. I don't know how much more you could possibly do in a park area. Now, if we had more space than just the two fog houses, there's a possibility to expand what the Ecology Center is already doing and produce more, but I don't think we need a building to do that, because I'm a real firm believer in no child left indoors. And I don't think, I want to put more kids inside. I'd like to get more kids outside. The other piece that hasn't been talked about, and it bothers me as much as anything, because I'm a very strong environmentalist, for those of you who know me, is that that building is a huge, I mean huge imprint, you know, for the community. It makes a big footprint. And if you're going to add a restaurant to it, you're going to make that footprint even larger. I would like to see this council take a bold step and do something that's never been done in my 72 years here, which is actually create green space. Rather than build something out of green space and take it away from our community, let's create one. Let's create a real nice green space for the entire community to be on. And I hope you will consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dick. Okay. I'm going to open up. Are there questions right now for city staff or anyone from this group? Okay. Seeing no lights, I'll open it up to discussion. Or let me, before I do that, excuse me. This item, again, item 3, Resolution 43-R-18, is for action. Is there a motion to move this?
Move approval.
Is there a second? Okay. I'm going to open it for discussion now. Alderman, Rainey.
I just want to clarify one thing. I think there has been some discussion that the process going through preservation would not be followed, and I think we have clarified that, that it would be followed. That what we're here tonight to do is to take this resolution and to present, by passing this resolution, we're saying that we're agreeing with the Lighthouse Dunes people that the idea, the concept of improving the lakefront and renewing the dunes and the gardens and the grounds, and removing the buildings is what we're supporting, and that they're going to pay for it, but that we're sending this matter to our city manager and staff to negotiate that deal. And if all of that works out, then we will send it to preservation, but not until that time. And we'll send it to preservation, and, you know, it'll go through the preservation process of a landmark being considered for demolition. And at that time, they'll make a decision, and there'll be another lobbying campaign, I'm sure, with preservation, and it'll then come back to the council with a thumbs up or a thumbs down from preservation, and we'll proceed from there. But if the outcome is positive, the city will not pay for whatever the demolition. And if the outcome is negative, then we'll have to reconsider whatever that is. So we're not going to call in the wrecking ball tomorrow. We're going to begin a process of considering the demolition of Harley-Clark by virtue of negotiating with the Lighthouse Dunes people for financing the process. And that's my motion, and that's what I just moved.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman, Rainey. Alderman, Fisk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Alderman, Rainey, for that clarification. I do think it's important to find out through negotiations exactly what numbers we're talking about, exactly what the scope of work is. I don't believe the city manager has so far sat down, or the staff has sat down with anyone, so what we have are the few pieces of paper that are in the packet so far, and we need, obviously, more information. So if you would allow me, colleagues, just a minute here, because I think I have, I'm sort of in a unique position here, having been one of the authors of the Northeast Evanston Historic District. I was the, one of four community members who wrote that nomination to the National Register and as a local historic district, and was absolutely proud to do so, and we did a great job. I know maybe a little bit more in depth about the location here than some other folks might know. There didn't used to be a park on the lake north of downtown. It was all privately owned, all ran down to the beach. Sheridan Road was being developed, but there was no access to the public at all north of downtown to get to the beach and north of Northwestern. There were still some beach at Northwestern. Now, of course, there is none. And then there was the waterworks on land that Northwestern donated to the city for that purpose. But between Ingleside Park and the lighthouse, there were actually three parcels that were built with houses on them. One was Harley-Clark. The middle one was built in 1894 for Rosa Hitt, and then the other one furthest to the north was built for Charles Deering, and it was a huge estate designed by Daniel Burnham. The barn Daniel Burnham designed is still there. The house is long gone. But the city made an extraordinary effort, to Mr. Peach's comments, I don't know where he is, but the city made an extraordinary effort. When the Deering House, when Charles Deering left that house to Northwestern University, the city actually acquired it afterwards, and that was the first piece of the park that went in. Second piece of the park was Rosa Hitt's house, and that created the space where Noah's Playground is, where Lawson and Northeast Park are. In 1965, if you, I went over to the library today just to make sure I had my dates correct, but in the January 14th edition of the Evanston Review, was a story about the city of Evanston putting aside $85,000 to, among other things, purchase the Sigma Chi House for parkland. And I want to emphasize that, for parkland, because I think what gets lost in some of these discussions on historic preservation is that the city didn't have an intention of buying the house and using the house. That just sort of came as an afterthought. The city's intention was to buy parkland, and that was true for not only the Civic Center, but Miller School, the Neuer Street School, also designed, both, actually, school buildings were designed by Daniel Burnham, and Harley-Clark. So when you look at historic preservation, you look at more than just buildings. You look at historic preservation of natural features and of the natural elements that contribute so much to our community. Some of you may remember when Northwestern was doing its landfill in the early '60s, there was a huge effort on the part of, I don't remember the senator from Illinois, but to save the dune land in, right at the base of where Illinois and Indiana come together. And that was a huge effort, because a lot of that sand was being carted up to do the landfill. So that's a national park now. We have an opportunity here at this site to really restore the lakefront, and I don't want anyone to think that that's not historic preservation, because it is. The house has served us comfortably for a number of years. Unfortunately, the Art Center did not pay the amount that they were asked or had negotiated to pay. We didn't ask them to. We didn't do our job on the exterior of the house, and the house now needs an extraordinary amount of work. We made a decision several weeks ago about the lease with Lake House. I personally do not see that anything has changed to make me feel that that is a more viable project now than it was two weeks ago, so I wouldn't be changing my mind on that. But I think for citizens to come forward and say that they are willing and generous enough to allow us an opportunity to return part of our lakefront that we have so carefully acquired over so many years to be returned to its natural state is wonderful, and it's something that I want to know more about. So I would, I'm going to vote in favor of that tonight, but I also want to make sure that we get all the information that we need in the discussions that the city manager is going to have with the Lighthouse Dunes people. And I hear what all of you are saying. I mean, you're, yes, I do. I hear what all of you are saying. I took classes over there. I love the house. It's a great place. It is, for those of you who don't know me, when I first knew that the Art Center was moving out, I actually went with Mayor Tisdale, and I asked Colonel Pritzker to come with us and meet with our staff. Wally, I believe you were there, and we talked about the possibility of opening, of him restoring that house and running a five-bedroom B&amp;B. Unfortunately, that morphed into a 57-room hotel addition. No one would have supported that. But the people who had money to do that, I thought it was worthwhile making that effort to try to see if we could actually find someone who could restore that house and pay for it without an obligation to the city, because as you've heard tonight, the city does not have money to do that, nor did we ever intend to do that. The second thing we tried is, well, we tried a number of things. The idea and our possibility didn't work out because of political decisions in the election. I also approached Sigma Chi, who also has a large endowment, about going back to the house where they had occupied for a long time. Initially, they were very excited about that possibility. In the end, they looked at what the house required and said, "It's too much money. We can't do that." I supported Alderman Wilson in his motion to assign some money to it, to run recreations programs out of it. That didn't work out, and I'm actually really glad that we made the repairs that we needed to the fog houses, so that we can continue to run those ecology programs out of the fog houses. But this is something that I've spent a lot of time on, and without any criticism of my colleagues, this is something I was always really interested in. Can we do it? But I think, like Ms. Kustok mentioned with her experience, it became clear to me that there was just no way that this could be financially feasible without making a hugely negative impact on our natural lakefront. I was very concerned about the number of special events, very concerned about the precedent that would be setting. I don't think that's consistent with our lakefront master plan, and I actually think it's anti-preservation to ask so much of a structure that can do so much damage to our lakefront. Finally, I will say that, in the last, this is my third term on the council, every single time I've run, I have put out campaign material where I let the voters in my ward know where I stood on issues. Every single time, my first priority has been lakefront protection, and I take that really seriously. So this is only by way of explanation of how I've come to the decision that I've come to. But I think that in the end, we're not all that far apart. I think the thing that separates us is not a love of the natural environment and not a love for Evanston, but we have an issue with the house. I don't see us overcoming it, so I will be supporting Alderman Rainey's resolution.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman, Fisk. Alderman, Wilson.
Thank you. I do appreciate all of the thoughtful and respectful conversations that I've had with people over the, you know, past, in particular, a couple of months. Alderman, Fisk is right. A lot of time and energy has gone into this from the community and from the council. For those of us on the council for a couple of terms, this has been a really, really long, ongoing project. I know that the newer members of the council have spent a lot of time to get up to speed on all of that, so they've spent a lot of time and energy to understand the history and the context. You know, listening to the public comment, listening to the conversations in the community, it's unfortunate that there really is a very long list of misunderstandings. I couldn't even, you know, go through the list to correct them all. A point that I do want to make is that, I want to go to bat here for the city manager, who generally speaking, he does what we ask him to do, so when I see or hear people criticize him or accuse him of, you know, seizing or taking control over this narrative, it's not fair, because, you know, we're the council, we're the ones who are responsible to the community for making the decisions, and he acts in our direction. I think that's a very important point, and I think that applies to all of the members of our staff who are doing work. You know, those who worked on the survey or anything that they're doing for us, they're out there working for us as, whether they live here or not, as members of our community. Alderman, Fisk kind of covered some of those historical points. In 2015, there was this proposal that ultimately did not prevail. The Pritzker proposal, which was really Tawani, that was not to create a lovely bed and breakfast, as is so often referred to, but in fact, the Tawani proposal specifically said, and I'm looking at it right now, the original business model considered for the location was a boutique hotel with approximately 15 rooms, an event center, and/or a restaurant. The Tawani proposal concluded that the concept's not feasible, and they had made an alternative proposal with the 57-room hotel, 200-car garage, and on and on and on. I think they also wanted a tax waiver. But the point is that a lot of things have been considered, and a lot of time and effort's gone into it. I understand that the Lake House group has also made a very significant commitment of time and energy and effort, but the fact of the matter is, when we voted on this a couple of months ago, contrary to what some of you hear, the timeline submitted with the lease was not the timeline that was in the RFP response. And when we voted and approved the RFP response back, I think it was in October, we were looking at the representation that there was going to be around $4.8 million invested in the property by 2020, and the lease had something in the neighborhood of $500,000. Okay? We have a job to do. We have a responsibility. Part of that responsibility isn't to say, "Okay, we made a deal with somebody for $4.8 million." We don't just say, "Okay, we're going to take $500,000 instead." You know, could that have been overcome? I don't know. We had a conversation about granting more time, but when board members made presentations that night, they weren't asking for more time. They were telling us that the response was the same. And the nine of us, with the benefit of having the pieces of paper in front of us, know that it wasn't the same. It's not the same. So, you know, we're not out to get anybody. We're not dealing in bad faith, and I'm not saying that the group was dealing in bad faith. I think that they worked hard and they did their best. But at some point, I think that their group lost control of the conversation, because there is a high degree of passion for this property. A lot of memories collectively in the community are tied to this space. We allowed for an accelerated RFP process that was based on a representation that would facilitate the fundraising. I do think that that almost certainly precluded other ideas and options. Right now, the beach is open and available. Anybody can use it. I go there. I don't see any impediments whatsoever for anyone in the community to get on a bus and get close, get on a train and get reasonably close, hop on a bicycle, and get right there. If you go early in the morning, plenty of parking. I'm often the only car there in the morning when I go for my run, so it's not a problem to get there and enjoy the space. When I think back over the history, back, I think, from 2015, I heard from an individual who shared that they were here at the council meeting to discuss and participate in a conversation about youth violence. And at that time, then, as probably tonight, that conversation was largely overshadowed by conversations about the building, and that person was very disheartened then, and probably tonight, to have And that person was very disheartened then, and probably tonight, to have so much dominance about this, about this space consuming the community conversations. Restoration of this property to a natural state, it's a legitimate proposal. It's worthy of conversation. Any reasonable idea should be suggested. We should consider those things. That's our job. So for us to turn somebody away without any consideration, I don't think is, I don't think is appropriate. Personally, I think it was Ms. Edwards had made a comment, though. I feel like an up or down vote on a demolition concept is a bit premature. The concept of a community design process makes sense to me. I think that, I don't think, I know. We have a committee report that was submitted to us suggesting how the property should be used, and in my mind, that still stands. So just because the one group didn't follow, wasn't, you know, didn't get to where they wanted to be, doesn't mean that something that's in line with that committee proposal is not possible. In the weeks that have transpired, I've heard from a couple of individuals who shared that they had some thoughts and ideas for how the property could be used. I've had people suggest perhaps, perhaps you keep the coach house, perhaps you don't keep the big building. Then their question is, "Do you keep the trees? You know, do you chop down the trees? What do you do with the gardens?" If we say yes to one thing, we're going to take this room, whatever we do, we're going to take this room and we're going to shuffle everybody. If we say, "You know what, we're going to, in the process of giving it to the Lake House group to use, we're going to cut down all the trees." Okay? Then a bunch of people are going to go into this corner like, "No, we have to keep the trees." So it's complicated. It's not easy. So I don't feel comfortable supporting a, an up or down vote on negotiating demolition. The resolution says negotiating for that. I don't want to put this group in a similar position that the Lake House group was in because I think it's a little bit premature to be negotiating something when we're really not sure where we want to stand. We have a directive that's in place, and this is not consistent with the directive. So if the directive is going to be modified, I think that should be the starting point. And then sort of this community idea would be, would be part of that. So that's my thought.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman Wilson. There's a lot there, yes. All right, is there anyone else that wants to talk for discussion? Okay, Alderman Fleming, and then Alderman Winn.
I guess I have a question for Alderman Wilson. In terms of the directive that's in place and changing the directive, can you just kind of clarify that a little bit more for me? Because I felt like the directive was to negotiate the RFP, which, you know, we did, and then negotiate the lease, which we did, and then we voted. So I guess in my mind, we don't really have a directive at this point. So if you could clarify that.
When I say that, and Alderman Revelle had served on the, served on the committee, a committee was formed, organized, and gave a report on how the property should be used. So that was the directive. And in conjunction with that report and the conclusion on how the property should be used, we chose to issue an RFP for responses that were, that were consistent with that. And, you know, probably against my better judgment at the time, because I was optimistic, we did accelerate that RFP process so that the group could get, you know, get a vote in October, so they could be doing fundraising over the holidays. I understood that at the time, but perhaps that maybe wasn't the, wasn't the right thing to do at the time. But again, I view the committee directive as being, you know, the, the use of the property. Whether other options are conforming with that, I'm not sure, but I think that's what we should be looking at first before we start negotiating.
All right. So thank you for that. I guess my, my thoughts are a couple. I, if I'm remembering correctly, and I was just returning to town at this conversation point, before Alderman Revelle had a committee, our current mayor had a committee that gave some directives as well. So, and I appreciate the directives. I also feel like we, in my opinion, took the report, went forward, and it didn't net the results that maybe we wanted. And so now, my concern is that we have a building that we don't necessarily have a city use for. I'm sure a lot of people, as the lady said here in the polka dot, have ideas, which ideas are great, but we have to pay for ideas, or someone has to pay for the idea. And, you know, right now, as we look at our budget that, you know, we're going to continue to work through, and who knows, living in the state of Illinois, where we're going to land next year for our budget, I'm very concerned, like I told Tom Hodgman and Alex Block about a year ago, I'm very concerned with going down the road where I don't see a financial solution that doesn't leave our taxpayers on the hook. I'm concerned about, you know, potentially leaving a building there for, I don't know, say, three years while they fundraise. And we've already had a gentleman say, "The roof tiles are falling down." And, you know, I have no clue, I'm not a structural engineer, what might happen to the building just with this sitting there. At the same time, I can't say that I'm personally super excited about green space, you know, it's just not my thing. But I am excited about being financially responsible. And as much as I would like to go down several rows about the beauty and grandeur of this house, we as a city don't have the money, and I don't think that we have shown a need for this structure. And I think just as we did with the Lighthouse group and other groups that have come for it, not necessarily around this building, but we have allowed our city manager, our city staff to negotiate. I don't want to say negotiate in terms of make a deal, but to get more information. That's, I guess, more so what I see this conversation being. And I think it's our, as you said, I mean, we have a due diligence, we represent a lot of people in the public, to make decisions based on a lot of information. And so I can't make a decision yes or no about restoring anything if I don't know the information. So I think it makes sense, in my mind, to allow the city manager to move forward with this conversation, understanding, just like he moved forward with the Lake House and Gardens, that he came back with something, and we still have the right to say yes or no to it. In terms of the referendum, you know, I kind of like that idea to get public feedback. However, I don't see that that's going to get us further than where we are tonight. At that point, when we get the referendum results, either people want to keep it, and we either ignore them, or we have to figure out a way to pay for it, or people don't want the building, and we're back to where we are tonight, which is trying to figure out how to pay to get rid of the building. So I am one for not prolonging hard choices. And so I would like the city manager to move forward with having this discussion, bringing back more information so that we can make a choice based on some real facts and real numbers and a timeline. Because I'm also interested in making this decision and hopefully capturing these people who are here and passionate about this building, capturing their interest to continue through November to get through our budget. Because I think that, you know, I, again, my bigger concern is that sometimes I see our city residents getting very passionate about their issue, but it doesn't necessarily, for me, carry out to our bigger issues, which are our budget. And, you know, I get a call, and probably you all do too, all the time, for people who can't afford their taxes and seniors who need handyman service, but they need more than we can offer. And, you know, lots of bigger issues that I think whether Harley-Clark is standing or not, citizens in the city are going to continue to, to struggle with. And so I would like to move us past this conversation and on to, kind of, I think, other real-life-changing issues that people in our city are facing right now and every day.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Move to Alderman Winn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to share a few of my thoughts on this. I think that we, I had been on the council during the entire time that we have been discussing this and, and struggling with it and trying to find solutions for it. And I think the reason why we have struggled is because it is such a difficult problem. Given that, though, and I will say that when we had the vote to, about the Colonel Pritzker's, Colonel Pritzker's proposal, that night, I said that if it was a choice between the 57-unit hotel, boutique hotel, I would rather deconstruct the building. However, I think, I do think that there, as Alderman Wilson has said, there were many misunderstandings that happened along the way. And that I urged the council, whatever night that was, April 9th, I think, that we should continue the negotiations with the Lake House group because I thought there was a possibility of reaching an agreement. I still think that there's a possibility of reaching an agreement, and I do think that it's premature for us to agree to this motion. I also, I share some of the, I share some of the concerns of both Alderman Wilson and Alderman Fleming, that, as I understand what they're saying, is that I think once we step on this slope, we've slid to the bottom. I don't know that, and I appreciate all of the hard work that the Dunes Restoration Group has done as well. But I don't, I am concerned that, that we will be moving too rapidly towards demolition or deconstruction without proper analysis of what we're doing. And so, and once the house is gone, the house is gone. So I am not prepared to support this tonight. I, I think that we need to wait. We need to understand better what's involved. And I believe that we should give the Lake House and Gardens group one year. And if after one year, the $1 million hasn't been raised, then I would turn to the, to the Dunes Restoration Group and talk to them again. My children attended Lincoln School. We were a Lincoln School family for 10 years. All of you probably drive past Lincoln School at some point or other. It's on the corner of Forest in Maine. It is one of the ugliest buildings that exists in Evanston. It's cinder block. For the longest time, people did not know where the entrance was. It was not possible to tell where the entrance was. I have seen pictures of the school that was the original Lincoln School. It was magnificent. It was a castle. I know people who went to, went to that school. The kindergarten rooms had a, had a fish pond in them, obviously not something DCFS would accept now, but it had a fish pond with a bridge. That school was demolished in 1969, just ahead of the preservation movement. I think if that proposal had been raised in 1971 or '72, no one would have demolished that building. I mean, it was said that it was a fire hazard. A fire hazard, while we had schools like Noyes and Washington that managed to survive that. I have to say, when my two children saw pictures of it, they were stunned that they could have gone to a school that magnificent. And I was sorry they weren't able to. They were thrilled when they got to Nichols and even more thrilled when they got to EJHS. So once it's gone, it's gone. And that, looking at those, those pictures of the old Lincoln School, just makes me very hesitant to move forward at this time with this. I want to give Lake House and Gardens one year. One year. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk, and then we got Alderman Revelle. Okay, Alderman Revelle, and then Alderman Fisk. You had your light on before, and then did you turn it off not to talk? Okay, I keep a little tab up here. All right, Alderman Revelle, and then Fisk.
Well, as Alderman Fisk mentioned, when the city acquired the property in 1965, the intention truly was to consolidate the parkland and preserve the access for the community to the beach, and that was a really important goal. They, the mansion was incidental to that purchase. But over the years, as we know, many, many, many Evanstonians have fallen in love with that mansion, and we're hearing from them today. They played around the grounds of the house as children. They took art classes there. They absorbed the magic of this iconic landmark estate. And then I saw a new generation of Harley-Clark fans being born at the rally at Harley-Clark on June 9th. They were full of excitement. They were drawing pictures about saving Harley-Clark, full of excitement about this special place. And this one little kid said, "Harley-Clark is like Harry Potter's castle. It really is, and aren't we lucky to have it?" So they were just mesmerized by this really beautiful old building in need, obviously, of significant restoration. But the architects who have gone through it have all found that it's really a solid building in surprisingly good shape for the many years of city and our neglect. But some people have said that Evanston is full of historic old homes, and so why do we need one more? But this old home is the only one that belongs to all of us in the community. It's, as we've heard tonight, it's the only lakefront property in Evanston that regular citizens can enjoy and experience firsthand. Historic buildings are important to the fabric of a community, and especially a community like Evanston. I mean, historic preservation is, it's, it's just part of our, our, our identity, I think, these days. And Evanston has a really strong record of commitment to saving the past for the enjoyment of future generations. And I really firmly believe that we want to do that with our Harley-Clark mansion. We've been inundated with emails, and I apologize to my colleagues, because I know you've been, you know, found it pretty tiresome and frustrating to open your email every day and be deluged with another bunch of emails. But in among the mass emails, we've also received some wonderful, individual, heartfelt messages. And I'll just share with you just a paragraph from a particularly unexpected and memorable letter that we received from the granddaughter of Harley-Clark, of all things. And she talks about, "I still hold precious memories of my days attending Royce Moore and Lincoln School and of this home, house, mansion, sliding down the main banister," which I don't think is what we have envisioned with Lake House and Gardens, "but purple-tiled bathroom, the light in the upstairs sunroom, the expanse of the ballroom, and best of all, the organic aroma from the ferns and orchids growing in the damp of the conservatory. Once the wrecking ball swings, places like this are gone forever. It's good to feel the presence of the past, to have a sense of a vision and its monuments that can serve as waymarks in our continuing community growth. I do so hope that for Evanston." So I too, I agree with Alderman Winn. I think it's premature to be considering demolition of this unique building when there is a viable alternative and a group of citizens prepared to raise the funds needed to make it happen. There's been, as Alderman Wilson mentioned, just tremendous amount of miscommunication, misunderstanding, the whole concern about why the Lake House and Gardens people don't have a ton of money to show us right now. They've been under perhaps the misperception, but the feeling, they've been told that they couldn't satisfy the fundraising benchmarks with, unless they had cash and not pledges. So they felt, well, they needed to have the signed lease in order to be able to go out and actually get cash from potential donors. So there've been, and, and the whole lease agreement that came to the council in April, it definitely had flaws. And the, and the Lake House and Gardens people are really, really eager to work with the city to come up with a lease agreement that addresses those legitimate concerns of my colleagues on the council. So I really believe that we should be giving Lake House and Gardens a year to demonstrate their fundraising capacity, that there are the donors out in the community who want to help them realize their vision. I would say, come back to us within a year with a million dollars in pledges, and then we can work on the lease agreement to address the concerns expressed by the council. And I'll just finish with the last paragraph of Congresswoman Shakowsky's letter that arrived to us at about 5:30 today. "The city of Evanston would be no worse off if they allow more time for the funds for this building's restoration to be raised, especially with Evanston Lake House and Gardens offer to pay for one year of the cost to maintain the building. However, the finality of demolition would mean the loss of a piece of history, the only public lakefront building in Evanston that everyone can access, and educational opportunities for the whole community. For these reasons, I encourage you to vote no on advancing demolition discussions at this time."
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Revelle, Alderman Fisk, and then we've got Alderman Saffron.
Well, there are a number of things, I guess, I want to, I want to address about This, this conversation that we've been having in the community with the emails, the petitions, the rallies, and all of that, has been very difficult for all of us. The name-calling, the attacks have been painful. And I just don't mean, and it occurred tonight, when someone up at the microphone was talking about the people who are coming here to advocate for a different point of view as, "Oh, they're just neighbors. They've got an inherent interest in taking down the house." That's never been my perception, and I don't like to think of that conversation as being one that we have in Evanston. But the amount of anger and misrepresentations, when I get emails saying that I'm taking bribes, or that I'm corrupt, or other things, when I've given, as everyone up here has done, their lives to the community. We're people just like you. Any of you can run for Alderman, and I hope that you will consider that. But I don't see a lot of- But I don't see a lot of people wanting to run for public office in the face of the kind of vitriol that's been going on with these two or with these organizations. I did call Tom Hodgman, and I told him about my concern about that. We don't think badly of anyone up here. We try to make decisions about what we think is best for the community. And sometimes we agree, and sometimes we disagree. But it's really important for that conversation to be respectful and reasonable. I had a very bad experience this past weekend with a woman who I now know has dementia, who sent a terrible email, which I answered, and answered, and answered, and tried, as I do with everyone, if you're in my ward, I will write back, I will call you back, I will come to your house, I'm available for you. But I was astounded by the amount of information and the words that she chose. I had only heard those from other people associated with your group. And I, it made me just extraordinarily sad. I'm not sure now that without some repair, that I could ever say, let's go forward with another conversation with lake house. I don't see lake house as being a particularly positive partner for the city. And the idea that we would enter into a 40-year lease, and that those of us on the council right now would be turning over that lease to colleagues that would be following us, I'm not sure I could do that either. Somehow or another, this needs to get repaired. For right now, though, those of us who are up here need to make decisions. We have what appears to be an offer on the table to cover the $450,000 cost that the city would incur if that building were taken down. I don't want to say that we shouldn't be talking to these people, I want to know more about it, and I think that's the responsible thing for us to do. Whether it goes forward or not, I think Alderman Fleming mentioned it, whether it goes forward or not, whether ultimately that's the decision or not, to do, to say we're not going to do that would be us trying to make a decision in a vacuum. As I say to people in my ward all the time, every time I go to a ward meeting, you people know me, I've been out here in front of you now for nine years, you know where I stand, I, I'm an open book. You're more than welcome to call me up on any issue at all, but that's not what I've been hearing. This has got to change. Because as I said in the response to that email, no house is worth this, folks. We need to fix this. No house is worth this. So I really want to encourage us getting more information, and we'll see where it goes.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Sufferton.
I do think that Alderman Fisk is correct, that the tone of this has been bad, and I think that we're doing a disservice to this discussion by using the 2015 1,500-person survey as proof of where the community is. I think that if this process is going to go beyond November, we should take advantage of the fact that there will be 25,000 Evanstonians voting, and have an advisory referendum, so we know where people are. I don't believe that the prevailing opinion in the ward that I represent is for demolition, but I've heard from enough people that I also represent that feel that way, and I think they should have a voice, too. And I think that, to Alderman Fisk's point, we have an obligation to understand what we're voting on, and covering our eyes and closing our ears and saying, we don't even want to listen to what is being proposed on the other side, is irresponsible. So I'm going to vote tonight to go forward and listen to what's being said, but I'm also going to ask that we put on the ballot in November a referendum. We can figure out the words, but do the people of Evanston want this building deconstructed, demolished, or do they want to keep it? And I think it's something that's more important to know how everyone feels here today, rather than how 1,500 people felt in 2015 in an online survey. So I'm going to vote to authorize the city manager to listen to what's being said on the other side, and I'm also going to ask that between now and August, we give serious consideration to putting a referendum on the ballot, so we know where the people of Evanston stand in 2018.
Thank you, Alderman Sufferton. Alderman Rainey.
Do you have any more lights on?
I do.
Yeah, what?
I do, I have Alderman Braithwaite.
I was just going to call the question.
I was going to call the question.
All right. Go ahead.
So, go ahead. We have a motion, and that was second, and for Resolution 43R-18. City Clerk, could you please take the role?
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
And I'm sorry, Alderman Rainey.
All right. Resolution 43-R-18 authorizing the city manager to meet with the Evanston Lighthouse Dunes organization, negotiate on the costs associated with the restoration of the dunes and gardens and demolition of Harley Clark Mansion and Coach House, passed the city council 6 to 3. We're going to move on now to item number four, Resolution 41-R-18 authorizing the settlement and release of all claims in Sernovich versus the city of Evanston. Move for approval? Okay. Is there a second? Any discussion? All right. City Clerk, could you take the role, please?
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
All right. Resolution 41-R-18 authorizing settlement and release of all claims in Sernovich versus the city of Evanston, passes the city council 9 to 0. Lastly, we have three appointments. I'll run through these appointments. We have Lawrence Donahue to the Housing and Homelessness Commission. We have Mark Cruz to the Housing and Homelessness Commission, and we have Renee Phillips to the Housing and Homelessness Commission. This is for action. Is there any?
Second.
I'm sorry, did you move that?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. These appointments pass the city council 9 to 0. Call the wards. Alderman Fleming?
Yes, a couple of things. I want to thank all the Ninth Ward residents who participated in the online survey or the paper survey. We are in third place. I'm very competitive, and so next time, we will be in first place. But I do, I do appreciate them for fulfilling that. I know it was very time-consuming. I also want to thank the city staff that participated in the survey. I found those answers to be very helpful, and so thank you, city manager, for extending this survey to the staff. And also, lastly, the Ninth Ward is going to have, we're going to have a ward meeting this Thursday at 7:00 PM at Grace Lutheran Church on the corner of South Boulevard and, I think Wesley. The discussion for this meeting is budget. I will give an update of a couple other small ward-related issues and take some questions, but the focus of this is going to be budget, so please be prepared with your budget questions.
Great, thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Race Against Hate, wonderful success, hot day, amazing cleanup. I just don't know how they do it. It just, it's like it never happened. But thanks to all the people who turned out for that. Happy graduation to Northwestern graduates. As soon as that's over, we get back to Sheridan Road construction. So we're looking forward to Sheridan Road construction finishing up. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Myself and Alderman Simmons, this Thursday evening at 7:00, plan to host our first joint ward meeting. I believe it's going to be G...
300.
300, and the focus will be the budget.
Terrific, thank you. Alderman Wynn? Alderman Wilson?
I just really enjoyed the race also, so it was a great, also Custer Street Fair, so thanks to everybody who spent an extraordinary amount of time and energy making both of those events highlights of our summer, so thanks.
Terrific, thank you, Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Thank you. In addition to the budget, we will give an update on the waste transfer station, and all are invited and encouraged to come and celebrate Juneteenth tomorrow, 6:00 PM at Twigs Park. Tasha will be performing a poet, singer, and activist, and we will have food trucks there. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Sufferton, Alderman Revelle, Alderman Rainey.
Just thank everybody for all the work they did on the Harley Clark issue.
Yes, and thank you, everybody, for that very, very civil and respectful conversation. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out to the June 18th city council meeting.